So would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Baines. Capriolio.
Here.
Chavez. Brettafield.
Here.
Olivier. Brandau. President Soria.
Here.
Next, we will be doing the invocation. So if you could all please welcome Joe White from the neighborhood church. And please stand and stay standing for the flags to look.
Let's pray. Lord God, thank you for each of our representatives here today. Thank you for the ways you use them to serve the common good in our city. Thank you that Fresno has a DNA of hard work. From our genesis, a rainbow of workers speaking native languages, Chinese, Spanish, Scandinavian, Armenian, Russian, German, Japanese, English, and many others have helped create this city, this place we love. Thank you. And thank you for the way they use our city to feed our nation. Best grapes and almonds, peaches, nectarines. And thank you for our neighbors, each of them in our fields today who make it happen. God, guide us as we govern today. Give us understanding to lead with humility, courage to lead with honesty, and compassion to lead with kindness. And Lord, fill us with hope today that as we govern, we can remember you haven't given up on our city, that you love our city, and you're using each of us here today to heal this place we call home. Thank you for entrusting us to be stewards of justice and ambassadors of reconciliation as you lead us to collaborate and work together for the well-being of Fresno. Let each of our decisions today be marked by our gratitude for our past, thankfulness for our present, and hope for our future. In your name we pray. Amen.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under one individual, with due justice. City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's a couple changes. Proclamation for Ron Scott, that will be moved to the 24th. The workshop relating to purchasing will be moved to the 24th. And the proclamation for the Grizzly Fest, an item 4B update on the Grizzly Fest, will be heard around 10 o'clock.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers have any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? See none, motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we have the consent calendar. Would any councilmember like to pull an item for discussion? And if anything gets pulled, we will be discussing after the ceremonial presentations.
Council President, I'd like to pull item 1G, please.
Great. Councilmember Chavez, did you? Perfect. So item 1G will be heard after the ceremonial presentations. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? See none, motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Now, we have a full morning with ceremonial presentations. So what I'm gonna ask everyone who is here participating in the ceremonial presentations, these are always very exciting, but in the interest of time, just want to ask all my colleagues to be mindful of how long they take as they're presenting. But again, we do have quite a number of them this morning. And so we'll go ahead and kick it off with our Vice President, Brandau, doing the presentation of the SPCA Pet of the Month. Oh, and they brought you a cat. Did you request that?
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. So these are our friends from SPCA. And actually, in our consent, what we just passed, one of the items in the consent calendar was to extend our relationship with SPCA for another year. So they do a great job in our community. I know I serve in Northwest Fresno. They've been out many times educating the community about stray dogs, stray cats, and how to chip your animals, and just how to take care of your animals. So and I know that you do the same thing throughout the whole community. And so you're at a lot of events. You set up a booth, you let people know about animals and how to take care of them. And then you always bring us an animal to showcase that they have a lot of great pets for people to give away. And so I want to take this little kitten, okay? I have a cat. I know it surprises everybody. But my cat would have this little cat for a snack. But we won't go into that. But this is, this little kitty's name is Stormy. Look at little Stormy. Little Stormy's purring right now. Sometimes these cats crawl all over me, but this one's just sitting here relaxing and purring. Stormy would make a wonderful pet for anybody. Look, there's Stormy goes, it's a little boy. Okay, and is Stormy fixed yet?
Uh, he will be.
Okay, he will be. All right. But they take care of a lot of animals, and we're trying to find good homes for as many of these animals as possible. So if you'd like little Stormy, or maybe a little puppy, or dog, or mature animal, they've got a lot of great animals for adoption. And I think you even have bunnies, and snakes, and horses. You have the whole range. But I would love it if somebody could take Stormy. Isn't Stormy a beautiful little kitty? All right. Thank you for your partnership with the City of Fresno.
Vice President Brandau, it matches your suit, so maybe.
Oh, yeah. Oh, let me take a picture with Stormy. Matches the suit.
And we have a lot of kittens right now. It is kitten season, so if anybody's interested in signing up to foster, even if it's just like temporarily, we really appreciate it. It's a great way to try out a pet without really committing. And you can see your kids will work out with that animal. And no commitment, just a few weeks. So if you're interested, again, then you can foster as well.
Terry, Stormy's purring.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna go a little bit out of order, but we are gonna have the presentation by our fax department. They'll be doing the ASE Blue Seal of Excellence recognition for Fleet Management.
So good morning, everyone. I'm proud to be here recognizing this team in Fleet Management for the ASE Blue Seal of Excellence Award. It is my understanding, and thank you, Jim, for all the information, that the Blue Seal of Excellence Award is given if 75% of technicians are ASE certified. It was, I was very happy to learn yesterday that we actually are at 84% of our technicians certified. So that's amazing. And that this is our 18th year of consecutively getting this award. So with that, I applaud you all. Can we give these guys a big round of applause? Thank you for the work you do each and every day for the City of Fresno. Jim?
I'm gonna have the clerk read the proclamation in just a second. But I wanted to say, this ASE award, collectively, we have to get 75% of our technicians certified. That certification requires them to take some pretty tough written tests. And so each and every one of these folks up here have had to take those tests and pass those. They do an excellent job of getting to those tests and passing them. But more than that, these technicians, unlike, say, a dealership, they have to work on a variety of equipment that you might not see at other locations. We have equipment anywhere from police cars to garbage trucks to backhoes that they have to understand and know how to work on. So I'm very proud of what they did. I started in fleet, and the ASEs were being received, the awards were being received when I started. And I'm very happy that it's continued on consecutively for 18 years. I will note that in 2020, two more years, it will be their 20th anniversary. So 2020, 2020, we will be celebrating up here our 20th anniversary for receiving the award. And with that, I'll let the clerk read.
All right. Whereas the City of Fresno Municipal Fleet Management Division has earned the Blue Seal of Excellence recognition for the 18th year as prescribed by the National Institute of Automotive Service Excellence, ASE. A nonprofit organization dedicated to improving the quality of vehicle repair and service by means of voluntary testing and certifications of automotive repair and service professionals. And whereas, to be eligible for this recognition, an organization must have 75% of its automotive professionals ASE certified. In addition, there must be a certified technician in each area of service offered. To remain in the program, a business must renew each year and confirm their professional certification status. And whereas, the 32 automotive technicians employed with the City Municipal Fleet Management Division, 84% are ASE certified, which exceeds the Blue Seal Award benchmark. More noteworthy is that the division's mechanical staff complement includes 19 master technicians representing the highest level of individual ASE recognition possible. And whereas, of these master technicians, three are certified as both master automotive technicians and master medium-heavy truck technicians. And whereas, the demand faced by these technicians are significant to effectively and efficiently maintain the city's diverse 2,000-plus unit fleet, ranging from patrol cars to refuge trucks to sweepers to buried construction equipment. And whereas, the city professionals have proven their dedication commitment to automotive services of excellence for their city vehicle customers. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, the City of Fresno, Wilma Quancheckter, City Manager, and the Fresno City Council recognize and congratulate the Municipal Fleet Management Division for earning this distinguished Blue Seal of Excellence Award and commend their efforts of going the extra mile in support to their customers.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a special presentation by Councilmember Chavez, doing a proclamation of Elder Abuse Services, Inc.
Morning, everyone. Oh, you guys are not awake. Good morning, everyone. So today, we are doing a special recognition for an organization specifically today, but also we want to celebrate our older Americans. And as some of you know, there's a bit of controversy as to what title we use. We had our fourth annual senior spring fling this past Friday at the Moskella Center. Patty did a great job representing the organization. But there was some controversy as to what, well, and our other partner, whether we call them mature adults, whether we call them senior citizens, older folks. But whatever we do, we know that they need a lot of services in our community. And that's really why we're here today. We want to kick off the Older Americans Month, but we want to also bring awareness to a lot of the elder abuse situations that we have, not just in the City of Fresno, but in Fresno County as a whole. There was an article about a week and a half, two weeks ago, that really highlighted the challenge that we have in our city and the county. We also have our local police department that handles the elder abuse. I'll let them say a few words here in a quick second. But I wanted to also take the opportunity to say that the project that we really want to highlight today is the home that we want to secure for our senior citizens, for them to be able to go to a safe place. Some of you know that we have safe places through EOC for youth, but we don't have one for senior citizens. And oftentimes, that's a big, big deterrent for them to get help that they need in services. So with that, I'll say, I'll have our local police, the Elder Abuse Unit folks, say a few words, and then we'll let our easy, the acronym is easy, but there's nothing easy about the work that they do.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Brian Rogers, and this is Detective Doug Reese of the Elder Abuse Unit at Fresno PD. And we are very, very excited about the possibility that we're gonna have soon to house elders in a safe environment. Oftentimes, unfortunately, the family are the abusers of our elders. So leaving an elder in a home or placing them with another family member is not always the best option to protect an elder when they've had particularly physical abuse. We receive 30 to 40 new cases every month, so that's about 400 cases every year of either physical or financial elder abuse. So it is a problem in our community. And elders carry our history, our heritage, and our knowledge, and they need to be respected and taken care of.
Very well said. Couple words?
We would like, this is our opportunity to ask anybody that's interested in finding out more about our organization, to go on our website. And please join us. Help us out. We need so much help in raising funds to become this shelter that we want to help these elders who are not speaking up because there's not a place for them to go. And so if you can help us raise funds, go onto the website, find out more information, get involved, become a volunteer, become a member. Thank you. And we have brochures. Thank you. Thank you, Louis Chavez.
Of course you have brochures, Patty. You always have brochures. Oh, in Spanish, English, and Mong, and Chinese, and every other language that we can think of. City Clerk, to read the proclamation?
Whereas, May is nationally proclaimed as Older American Month, in honor of our distinguished seniors and all their many contributions to the City of Fresno. And whereas, the 2018 theme, Engage at Every Age, emphasizes that you are never too old or young to take part in activities that can enrich your physical, mental, and emotional well-being. And whereas, to celebrate our seniors who have provided decades of care and valuable wisdom and guidance to the next generation by recognizing a senior service agency each year. And whereas, we pay special tribute to Elder Abuse Services for providing resource for elders in cities, for providing elders, excuse me, for providing resource for elders in crisis through advocacy and case management. And whereas, Elder Abuse Service recognizes that a safe place is needed for elder abuse victims to turn to and help resolve conflict using restorative, sorry, justice principles. And whereas, we must encourage them to continue their involvement in our valley and share their mission to protect and valuable, to protect the valuable contributions of our seniors. And we invite our community to help recognize these extraordinary citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the City of Fresno do hereby proclaim the month as May 2018 as Older American Month.
Give them a round of applause. Who's next, President Soria? Are we doing, or is it somebody else?
I think you're doing yours, but I don't see the mayor in the room, and he was gonna join you right for your next presentation.
Do you want to do the next one, then we'll wait for the mayor to join us?
Do we know if he's close by?
Is he in the building?
Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay, so then, yeah, you can present next.
Elvis is in the building. I mean, the mayor.
He didn't hear the trumpets. He didn't hear the trumpets.
So this is a proclamation of the Betts Company Day.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Not bad. Not bad.
I don't think your microphone is working.
Better?
Okay, we're here to honor the Betts family. This company is the oldest company in the City of Fresno. It's over 150-year anniversary. Give him a hand. I think Paul was around back then. And they've partnered with Duncan Polytech for years, and have trained countless workers in the, for the City of Fresno, and skilled work. They've made major contributions to our economy, and have been exemplary corporate citizens. So congratulations, and I'll let Louis say a few words.
Yeah, we have a little bit of history. Being on the Fresno Unified School Board, they did a lot of great work. And one of the things that I've always respected and admired about your company is the fact that you really focus on training that next generation of our workforce here in the City of Fresno. I had a chance to go out to the grand ribbon cut, not ribbon cutting, but the groundbreaking for the new facility over at Duncan Polytechnical. And that's gonna be a state-of-the-art facility. And I know that you guys were at the table, making sure that what they're doing there at the educational level fits into what our workforce needs are, really. And not just now, but really thinking ahead in the future. So I wanted to thank you for being a true partner with the City of Fresno, with Fresno Unified School District. And so with that, we'll just say a few words, and then we'll read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Councilmember. On behalf of all the employees of Betts, today is a momentous day in our history. 150 years is something to be really proud of. And I look at these younger generation folks, and I can only imagine what it's gonna be like when we're celebrating our 200th year in Fresno. We're very proud of our city, the City of Fresno and our surrounding area. This is a great place to be a manufacturer because we have amazing people that love to do the types of work that we offer. And we appreciate all the support we get from our city government and all of our school districts for reinvesting in the infrastructure that we need to be successful for the future. We have great collaborative relationships, and these relationships are founded on trust and good community values that we all believe in and we support. I could not be here without thanking all the amazing employees of Betts Company. Our team members are exceptional, and we're very proud of all of them. So thank you very much for this recognition. We so appreciate it. Thank you.
How many employees do you have? Just curiosity, total for?
About 330.
330 folks for our company. So with that, City Clerk, we read the proclamation?
It is with great distinction and pride that we join in honoring and congratulating the Betts Company on your 150th anniversary. As the oldest family business in the central San Joaquin Valley, the Betts Company is an industry leader in transportation and has remained committed to our city by creating countless jobs and partnering with Duncan Polytechnical to train the next generation of skilled workers. We appreciate all your hard work and dedication in providing Fresno with quality services and product that keeps the valley moving. We thank you for all that you have done over the years, and we wish you continued success. It's businesses such as yours that truly makes Fresno an all-American city. On behalf of the City of Fresno, we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the City Council do hereby proclaim May 10, 2018, as Betts Company Day.
Congratulations. Next, we will move on to a proclamation where we will be honoring Deli Delicious. So Mayor, are you, make sure that you still stay here. Perfect. You will be joining myself and Councilmember Brettafield.
Would you guys come on up? Deli Delicious? Don't be shy. Well, last two weeks ago, I had the pleasure to go to a grand opening of D&amp;D Bakeries. They are gonna make the bread, not only for Deli Delicious, but thousands of loaves I've seen by a tour of their plant across the valley, another smart business move. And they were honored by the Small Business Administration for their work, Mr. Habib, they got that right, Habab, and of course, Ali and the entire team. And I met Ali about 2007, 2008, actually, at Colorado Grill. My son and I always came by. And then I was walking precincts for running for city council. Of course, I ran into his house, put a sign up, and he's been a pretty good supporter. I've been a great supporter of Deli Delicious and all the food they go there. The same day I did the bakery promotion, just by circumstance, I went up to Deli Delicious, had a sandwich. So very proud of you guys. It's honored for me to recognize you and the great business success you've demonstrated with over 100 franchises throughout California. That's a success story you want to hear.
And I will just add that I'm very proud to be here this morning, really acknowledging the work that you guys have done, the mark that you guys have left here in the City of Fresno and the investment. I actually just had a sandwich at Deli Delicious, the newest one, on Olive in the Tower. It's not in my district, it's in the south part of the Olive Street, but still very prideful to represent that area. And so very excited that you guys opened up Deli Delicious franchise there. And so just excited to be here this morning to acknowledge, again, the track record that you guys have, the investment that you guys continue to make here in our community. And applaud you guys also for your community service efforts and giving back.
And I'd also like to add, like Lee, I met Ali over 20 years ago, walking precincts, came to his door. And of course, he's been a solid businessman, has the whole company has been. It was Colorado Grill, you started Deli Delicious, you've got now multiple stores. And your team is fantastic. We're proud of what you've accomplished, and we want to recognize you today. And here's a proclamation, Ali and, please, and care to say a few words?
Yes. Yes, hello, good morning, everybody. I'd like to start with Mr. Muhammad Hobab. He's the founder of Deli Delicious, a man that is a visionary for our company and very, very, a gentleman who invests in our community, in the school system, and supports the causes. Then our Vice President for Operation, Chris Abbey, Director of Operation, Faat Safa, and Senior Franchise Support Representative, Nani Curry, and the Director of Marketing and Franchise Sales is, of course, the big bad Nate Gilbert. And if I can defer to him.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. We're very proud to be here this morning. Thank you to everyone involved, mayor, councilmembers. This is amazing. I saw in the confirmation last night from ITZY, Deli Delicious Day. And that, it's just a lot of fun. That's incredible. We've done our best in this community to carry Mr. Hobab's mission, you know, to provide excellent service. We're foodies. We love great quality food and service, and we'd like to provide better sandwiches and things to the community, and that's a lot of fun. But on the back end, you know, it's a business, and we have a lot of great team members that we work with, and a lot of franchisees that have come and bought into the company to, you know, live out their dreams of small business ownership. So proud to be here, and the addition with the bakery was a lot of fun as well. So, you know, we'll do our best to continue to do good things in the community. And when you need sandwiches, we hope you'll come on down to Deli Delicious. Very proud to be here. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Clerk, would you read the proclamation for the record?
Whereas, Deli Delicious originated from a humble beginning as a small family-owned restaurant on Blackstone Avenue in Fresno, California, by minority immigrant family in the 1990s. on Blackstone Avenue in Fresno, California, by minority immigrant family in the nineteen nineties, and has been since put Fresno on the original national and international stage in the franchise world with currently more than a hundred Deli Delicious restaurants in the state of California. And whereas Deli Delicious has received and continues to receive state, local recognition for organizations of its excellence product, including Best Sandwich Award in two thousand and thirteen, fifteen, and two thousand and seventeen from the California Restaurant Association, Rising Star Entrepreneur of the Year Award in two thousand and fifteen from the Greater Fresno Area Chamber of Commerce, and the People's Choice Award for Best Sandwich in the Valley for two thousand and nine to two thousand and seventeen. And whereas Deli Delicious franchise has planned to continue its brand and product expansion with current expansion happening in Utah and Washington, and plans for future expansion in Nevada, Oregon, and Arizona. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno congratulates Deli Delicious for their most recent accomplishments of receiving the Ronald E. Harrison Award for the International Franchise Association this year, recognizing the contributions made to franchising and small business and for providing opportunities to minorities and understaffed groups whom desire to start their own businesses, and hereby proclaim May tenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Deli Delicious Day.
Congratulations and thank you.
Good job, Brianna.
Next, we have the Team Pregnancy Prevention Month being presented to the Fresno Barrios Unidos organization. If you guys all want to come on down. So just want to welcome Fresno Barrios Unidos here to the council chambers. I was a proud board member prior to getting elected. So I know the fabulous work that you guys do and the very critical work that you guys are doing here in our community to ensure that we minimize the numbers, lessen the numbers of teen pregnancies, because we know that there's a lot of impacts that happen here in our community as a result. So every year, the month of May is declared the National Teen Pregnancy Month. And, you know, elected officials around the nation recognize and educate our communities about reproductive health. In Fresno, we are no different. There's organizations like Barrios Unidos, Fresno Barrios Unidos, which continues to do this critical work. And you may ask, well, why is this important here in the city of Fresno? Well, it is, because there's some very startling statistics that this great team is continuing to try to change for the better in our community. So, six out of the ten counties here in the central valley have the highest teen birth rates and home of the highest rates of sexually transmitted diseases. So, there is a lot of work to be done here in our community, and the work that they're doing in the trenches every day continues to help educate our young people and families so that they are not impacted by this. I know in my district, I think nine-three-seven-two-eight, the teenage birth rate per one thousand females in the last, between two thousand and eleven, two thousand and fourteen, was sixty-three, almost sixty-four percent. So, very, very high. So there's still a lot of work to be done. A survey that this group did of more than three hundred teens in the central valley conducted by Essential Access Health showed that interactions with some providers can actually act as a barrier to teens seeking care or practicing safe sex. So, it is very important, again, to continue to do the work teenage pregnancy prevention offers various programs. And they will talk about, you know, reproductive health, the importance of educating our young people early on. And so I want to thank you guys for the work that you guys do. And if you just want to introduce your team, and we'll go ahead and read the proclamation after.
So first, I want to say thank you to Council President Esmeralda Soria for acknowledging the great need for this education in not just our community, but nationwide as well. And now, our whole team couldn't be here today, so, you know, we want to acknowledge the ones that aren't here as well. But starting off over here, we have Ifraín, then we have Deanna, Julie, Marissa, Lupita, myself, Javier Guerrero, David, Zach, Christie, and Daisy. And we have two staff putting more quarters in their meters right now, so hopefully they join us before this is over. But that's Jessica and Alejandra. But from there, I just want to give all credit to the staff, again, the ones that aren't here as well. They are the driving force behind providing this education in the community, and they're doing it in every single freshman biology class, in every single high school within Fresno Unified School District. Within that, that's a huge task to take on, but they take it on with full hearts because they believe in this education. So please, if we could give them a round of applause for this hard work. And again, reproductive justice is embedded and rooted in our organization. It goes above and beyond just contraceptive and STI awareness and includes identifying different types of abuse, how to communicate effectively, how to create boundaries, how to like live in healthy relationships. So, and a lot more than that as well. So, access to resources is also very important, as Esmeralda Soria pointed out. So again, we would just want to acknowledge the great need for this education, especially within the youth population. Anything that we could do to put youth less at risk and provide them, kind of guide them into a successful future, that's our passion. So with that, I want to pass it over to David Bodevong, who actually oversaw the implementation of this with Kristy Granillo, our program manager as well.
Good morning, everybody. I just want to give a special thank you to our program manager who worked in partnership with Fresno Unified, Kristy Granillo, and then our education team. I do want to say, hopefully someone from Fresno Unified is here. We, you know, other school districts are looking at us as the model. Three years ago, when we started implementation, we were one of the first when the California Healthy Youth Act passed. So, other districts are struggling, but we've got it down. And I just want to say thank you to Fresno Unified for that and our incredible team and Council President Soria. Thank you.
Awesome. So thank you again for the great work that you guys do. Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas every May, we recognize teen pregnancy as a public health issue that is associated with numerous immediate and lifelong economic and social impacts that affect both teen parents and their children. Whereas it is important to promote effective abstinence and contraceptive education, engage youth in programs that enhance their development and empower youth to make healthy decisions. And whereas there continues to be disparities among various racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups in preparing youth to avoid teenage pregnancies. The San Joaquin Valley teenage birth rate is the second highest rate for a region in California with the average of fifty-five births per thousand women ages fifteen to nineteen years old. Whereas Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month is an opportunity for parents, teens, educators, promoter, providers, faith-based organizations, local elected leaders, and policymakers to work together to reduce and prevent teen pregnancies in the city of Fresno. And whereas Fresno Barrios Unidos, in partnership with Fresno Unified School District, works tirelessly throughout our community to provide comprehensive reproductive health education to all high school freshmen, and will be including middle schools by the next year. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno does hereby proclaim May two thousand and eighteen to be Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month.
President Soria, just wanted to also thank the organization for the work that they've been doing. When I was at Fresno Unified, they were really took the lead in doing a lot of the work, the survey, that really led to this initiative. And so I wanted to publicly thank you guys for the work, and you're right across the street from Roosevelt. And that's very important for our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez, for those comments. I have one last proclamation, Councilmember Capriolio. Okay, don't be mad at me. And actually, this is a special proclamation to our very own city clerk team, to the staff. So I want to call them all down here. So I know Yvonne can't be here this morning with us, but I know she's here in spirit. But I do have the honor to recognize our great city clerk staff team. And this year marks the forty-ninth annual Municipal Clerk Week from May sixth to May twelfth, in which we recognize really the vital services that our city clerk provides here to our local city and just around the world, obviously, to local government, in our nation, to local governments in the community. So you guys may think, well, what do the city clerk, you know, what do they do? And the work that they do is very critical to our community residents that get notified about the meetings, record-keeping, and really provides transparency and trust in the government so that the residents can access the very valuable information that every other Thursday we discuss here or that happens in this building. So I want to thank all of you guys for your hard work, for your commitment to the city of Fresno to ensuring not only that we have the information, but that the residents that live here in the city of Fresno have access to information, and in some cases, access to that information in the language that they speak. So I want to thank you guys for the, again, vital work that you guys do. I was going to make you read the proclamation, but since you guys read every other proclamation, I'll quickly read it. So whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of our local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as an information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, especially here in the city of Fresno, now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran and the Fresno City Council, do hereby recognize this week, the May of May sixth through May twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, as Municipal Clerks Week. So thank you again to our clerk, our city clerk staff for all the work that you guys do. You guys definitely deserve, let's give them a big round of applause for all the work. I also want to special thanks, because I know that you guys work with our youth commission. So not only, you know, do they take on the task of providing all the information, but they do take on extra tasks, and I do want to commend you guys for all the due diligence that you guys do. They're too shy to speak. But...
Council President, can I make a couple... Yeah, and I'll just say something really quick. I was leaning over and talking to my friend here, Steve Brandow, and realized that I've been here close to eight years, and I don't remember us taking a moment to recognize the clerk's office during this week in the past. And shame on us for not doing that, because, and thank you, Council President, for making a point to do this proclamation and recognition today. You know, for those of you in the audience and people at home listening, the importance of the clerk's office is really difficult to explain, but it's vital. You all are the history keepers of this city. And history, I am a fan of history and the importance of reporting it correctly and honorably. And so I thank you guys for the service that you provide to this history about what we've done here and what we've accomplished. Our successes and our failures are all captured with the clerk's office. So, thank you all for your service. I wish we'd have been, I wish we had been recognizing you all in the years past, but don't think that because we haven't, we don't value you. So thank you very much.
I would like to add to that real quick and totally agree with everything Oliver just said. And it's a little unfortunate that Yvonne couldn't be here, but Yvonne, we want you to know that you're included, and we love you, and we thank you for everything that you do for council. So, thanks to all of you and including Yvonne.
In my defense, I've only been here for two years. So I think we might do this a yearly thing, but thank you guys for the work that you do. Appreciate it.
And now we have Councilmember Capriolio. Come on down.
Thank you, President Soria. We're, I have a couple of proclamations, but we want to start with a very, very special proclamation for a very, very special person. And she has been with the city for quite a long time and worked very diligently for the city. And we will miss her. And Doug, could you help me out with the identification of this person?
Tony Hunter, come on down. Tony has been a legal secretary in the city attorney's office for over twenty years now. Tony is not only a fantastic legal secretary, but she's a great person, too. It's unfortunate that we are losing her to go across the street to the U.S. Attorney's Office. We can't compete with them. We did everything we could to keep her, but in any event, we're here to thank her for her years of service and a great contribution to the office.
I think we first met when our kids were playing sports together not too long ago. So, I understand you started with a city attorney when you were sixteen, so sixteen and twelve is about right? About right there? Yeah, about that time. So, congratulations, and we thank you from the bottoms of our heart for all the hard work you've done and the inspiration, you're always happy, you're always smiling, you're always encouraging. We can go with a number of adjectives, and they all apply to you. So, can we read the proclamation?
Whereas Tony Hunter started working as a legal secretary for the Fresno City Attorney's Office in nineteen ninety-seven. Over the past twenty years, Tony has worked directly for the nine different attorneys and has provided superior backup services for many, many more. And whereas Tony exceeded the expectations of a legal secretary by proficiently handling stressful, complex, and legal tasks for attorneys in the state, federal, and appellate court. And whereas she has exhibited, she has exhibited her professional dealings with the public and clients and coworkers. Her organization, initiative, leadership, adaptability, and professionalism with great attitude has exceeded her. Whereas after twenty years of proud, dedicated services of the city of Fresno, Tony will be leaving the city to join the United States Attorney's Office. And whereas we thank Tony for serving with distinction, offer our deepest appreciation for her twenty years of excellence in public service, and we wish her the very best as she embarks upon a new journey. Now therefore be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Bran and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim May tenth as Tony Hunter Day.
I just want to say thank you to my office. I'm really sad to go, because I practically grew up here, but I couldn't pass up the opportunity, and I'm going to miss you guys. It's been a great place to work and so accommodating when my son was little, and I love you guys.
Thank you, Tony. Clem, thank you. Those, you know, honoring the clerk's office and honoring people like Tony and the staff and our whole team here at City Hall, these are really, really bright moments for everyone. So we all thank everybody for coming down and surprising her. She was truly stunned. I don't think I've ever seen that, ever, so we got her good. Okay. This month is Water Awareness Month, and so we're here to talk about water. So Nora, and your...
So, and today we brought examples of what you should do in your yard. These are water-wise plants, so we're gonna give them to you and let you distribute them.
Do I have to?
No. No, you could keep them all.
Did you want to introduce, your teammates here?
Yes. This is Brittany.
Brittany.
Brandy. Diane. A new employee, Anthony. Wendy. And Pearl.
Pearl, there she is. Well, thank you all for being here, we appreciate everything you do for us, and we can read that proclamation, Rihanna, if you're ready.
Whereas the month of May is Water Awareness Month in the Golden State of California, and the city of Fresno joins with the Central Valley Water Awareness Committee, composed of local, urban, and agricultural water communities to work to increase an understanding of water conservation. And whereas Water Awareness Month was established during one of California's worst droughts from '87 to 1992, to promote practical information that helps to ensure that the Golden State maintains a plentiful supply of clean water to drink, grow food, power the state's economic, and sustain the environment. It is important to develop and promote wise water use amongst the general public, businesses, and industries. And whereas Water Awareness Month is more important than ever as the impacts of the ongoing drought are felt statewide in California, and access to reliable and adequate water supply sources is vital to the city of Fresno thriving economy, residents' quality of life, wildlife, and healthy environment. Whereas water in California is most precious and natural resources and essential for our farm, businesses, and communities, and therefore we must manage its use appropriately. Whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to wise use of water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council members encourage all citizens to join us in learning more about water awareness, and encourage all Californians to make conservative and daily habits, join us in supporting local water organizations in their efforts to help Californians be water-aware. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand and the city Fresno council members do hereby proclaim the month of May as Water Awareness Month.
Congratulations, Water Awareness Month people. Thank you all for being here. Well, now we're going to go into an area that I'm particularly proud of and particularly happy about celebrating today. You know, last year, get my notes here so I don't forget anything. So this weekend, this weekend, May 18, 19, is Grizzly Fest in the city of Fresno. This is a fantastic event. My brother here, we went to Grizzly Fest last year, and we had a fantastic time. It was so much energy and so many people had come to Fresno that we met and talked to that hadn't been here before. And this was their first opportunity to see Fresno, enjoy Fresno, and see what we have to offer. So it was a fantastic event. They have a great lineup this year. I'll let Erin talk about that. Erin, why don't you bring your team down here? So, you know, they're gonna have people from all over California come to Fresno for a two-day festival. And not only will it put us on the map, it's gonna let Fresno be showcased in all the best ways that we can, because we're a great community, all of you are great citizens, we're all here together. This is just another illustration of how high we're gonna take Fresno in the future, and you are a critical part of that, and I'm gonna let my colleague say a few words.
Yeah, and I'll be, I'll be brief, and listen, we welcome this, we welcome this event. Yeah, you guys come over here, and, and here's the unique thing about what you all are doing, what I, what I want to highlight. And Cap's right, we had, we had a chance last year to go and experience Grizzly Fest firsthand in a real unique way. We actually got up on stage. We're YouTube sensations, by the way, Cap and I, and it was an amazing event. And I cannot tell you how well-organized, how well-planned, the excitement of the participants. We walked around the entire place, we, we watched our residents and even people from outside of Fresno having a great time in a safe, clean, fun environment. And this is exactly the type of businesses and activities that we want in Fresno, the type of business owners, the people that invest their time, their own money, and their own energy into something for us here. So listen, there's been, there's been a lot been said about Grizzly Fest, whether it's good or bad, but listen, it's, it's great, we're happy you all are doing it again, we're happy that you're keeping it here, we want to see it grow, we want to see our community supported. I was at lunch just yesterday, and a friend of mine said, are you gonna go to Grizzly Fest? I said, well, yeah, I went last year, I would assume I'll stop by. And, and they're grilling me about, when are the tickets on sale? Where are they at? So I don't know, you may want to make that announcement today, but people, people are ready, ready to go, people are ready to support. So it's really with a great deal of honor that we're able to present you all a proclamation today. It is simply just a way for us to say thank you, that we encourage this event, that we stand behind this event, and we welcome you to Fresno and to keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Oliver. I just wanted to add a couple more facts. This also supports our local artists, for instance, Zee Will and Fashawn. Fashawn was there last year, did a great job, crowd went crazy, it was a lot of fun. And it supports our local businesses as well, so. And last but not least, this team that you see before us here has given or will give $100,000 check net to, have given. It's been cashed, there we go. So it's in the bank, it's in the bank, $100,000 to the city of Fresno, to our Parks Department. That's the kind of people and quality of entertainment and people, professionals, we're dealing with. So I can't thank you enough for that, and Erin, you got a few words?
Paul, you always call me Erin, I'm Vartan. Erin's my brother, and my brother and I, along with, yeah, Tony, Heredia, and Evan Nebiker, and we have a huge team, but we want to extend the thank you to you. Thank you for your gracious words, Oliver and Paul, and everybody on the, on the council, everybody's been super helpful. And I want to thank Fresno PD, PD's been fantastic, expensive, but fantastic. And, and the whole team to put this together and to make sure that we have not only a great event, but a safe event, an event that can, that we can minimize the impact on some of the neighborhoods in the area, and we've been working diligently to do that, and we continue to work to do that, and we anticipate a very successful event. We do have a lot of people coming from France, England, we have ticket sales all over the United States, all, all the way from the East Coast, so we're anticipating at least two to two and a half thousand people coming in from out of Fresno and out of California, really. So that's, that's a huge number of tourists coming just for this event, so that's really exciting. I mean, I, I really don't know what to say, I'm humbled by this, I'm humbled for the opportunity to do this and to be able to work with this council and this city, and to be able to bring this to this city. I was raised here, and Fresno is near and dear to my heart, so we hope that you all come out. We do have a box office, it's a pop-up shop. Cashons were gracious enough to let us have it right across from Coney Island, you can get your tickets activated there. Yeah, there is online sales, Grizzly Fest, grislyfestival.com, you can buy tickets there. The tickets aren't your conventional tickets, they're wristband activation, RFID, it's almost like a key card access type of thing. We'll activate your tickets at the box office, we'll have a box office at the park the week of, which is next week. And, and that's pretty much it. So Lieutenant Tucker's been fantastic in helping us, and we thank you guys, too. And, you know, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I just want to thank you.
So I have a question. You know, Cap and I did something real special last year, we want to do that again this year. So that's my first question. Can we, can we, can we have, this is my last year on the council, so that, that way I want to go out with my friend in the bang.
Absolutely, and, and other council members as well, too. I, I've, Gary, I've asked Gary to come out on the Friday because Gary's from Queens, and so is Nas, so, but it's up, Gary, if you want it, it's yours.
Gary, let's go.
Gary, you and I on stage, man, rocking it out with Nas, come on.
Yeah, absolutely, any of the council members, you guys are all welcome, and we'll talk after this. But you guys, yes, you guys can have priority, absolutely, you're right here with us, so, so, so absolutely and definitely, and we hope to see all of you there and your families there. We're trying to make this a family-friendly type of event, especially in the daytime when you come out. We have, Tony's assembled the best food trucks and vendors in Fresno, he works with all the vendors that are gonna be there, he's done an outstanding job. Evan is phenomenal, and I don't know what we could have done without these guys, and if you see our team, it's, it's 30, 40 people deep. You know, there'll be, there'll be probably 400 to 500 people working for, you know, beginning that, that weekend and even the week of, and it's, it's an, an impact for Fresno in terms of economics, I think, that will bring at least, I'm hoping, 4 to 6 million. So I think that's, that's huge, too. Hotels, hotels are booked, and they're primarily are, you know, for our events, so. Event starts 2:00 PM, we changed it from 2:30. 2:00 PM, music starts at 3:00, and it'll go on till 11:30 PM, and no later than that.
That's Saturday and Sunday.
Friday and Saturday, yeah. May 18th is Friday, May 19th is the Saturday. So I'm trying to memorize some faces so I see them out there. Yeah, it's next weekend, next weekend.
Not this weekend, the following week.
Not this weekend, next weekend, 18th and 19th, all right? Yeah, it's very quick.
Thank you very much. This week is Mother's Day, I see a lot of mothers out there, Happy Mother's Day to all of you. And the proclamation?
Whereas Grizzly Fest was created by local music promoter and entrepreneur Aaron Hakimian of the Ian Group in 2012, and has since grown into the premier music festival of Fresno, California. And whereas Grizzly Fest has become an annual celebration for music lovers from all over central California who otherwise may not have the opportunity to experience live performances. Whereas the artist lineup for Grizzly Fest 2018 is perhaps the most diverse and ambitious thus far, featuring Grammy-nominated artists Nas, Foster of the People, Janai Iko, and Snoop Dogg, as well as a homegrown talent, Fashawn. And whereas, for the first time in history, the talent on display at Grizzly Fest will not be able to be contained without a single night, as the event has expanded to two nights of the entertainment at Woodward Park from May 18th to 2000, from May 18th to the 19th. And whereas Grizzly Fest 2018 is set to be the biggest and boldest event in its kind in Fresno, Grizzly like, Grizzly Fest demonstrates the economic and social benefits of living in our, in our visiting Fresno and single to, and signal to others that great growth and excitement occurring within our beloved city. Now therefore be it resolved that we Fresno, we Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim May 18th as Grizzly Fest Day.
Gentlemen, I also just want to personally congratulate you for, you know, keeping along and bringing this great event to the city of Fresno, and look forward to being out there, hopefully one of the days, Friday or Saturday.
Thank you.
So keep up, keep up the good work. And we're gonna go a little bit out of order, given that we just did the special proclamation on Grizzly Fest. We are gonna go to Council Item 4B, where Mark will be doing just a presentation, it is a Grizzly Fest update, which was requested by Councilmember Bretafeld.
Yeah, I just wanted to let people know, obviously, what's happening since this is coming up, and address some of the concerns that people have. We have Mark Standriff who can present, we have our police department as well as other staff who can address any issues, and just let the public know what's, what's gonna be happening during this event. So Mark, it's all yours.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Council President, members of City Council, my name is Mark Standriff, I'm the Director of Communications and Public Affairs for the city of Fresno, here to present the workshop on Grizzly Fest, although I don't know how much more I can say since Councilmember Capriolio pretty much did the workshop for me already. But nevertheless, we're gonna push forward here because there's really a lot of details that we want to talk about, about the logistics, the preparation that went into ensuring that this event is a success, and that it's a controlled event that really adequately addresses the public's concerns, effectively addresses the potential scenarios, and minimizes the impact to the surrounding neighborhoods. The city of Fresno and Mayor Brand have worked very closely with the promoter, as well as Councilmembers Brandow and Bretafeld, to ensure that this event goes as smoothly as possible. Also with me today is obviously one of the promoters, Vartan Hakimian, along with representatives from Parks, Police and Fire, Public Works, Parking, DARM, the Risk Management, and the city attorney's office to answer any questions you may have after the presentation. Let's see. We are now moving forward. There we go. Grizzly Fest is a two-day music festival that's running Friday, May 18th, and Saturday, May 19th, at Woodward Park. It's a total of 34 acts that are appearing over the two-day period. The festival gates are going to open at 2:00 o'clock both days. The performances run between 3:00 PM and 11:30 PM, and yes, I've been informed that Snoop Dogg has been told about the music curfew, so we're at least good to go from that standpoint. The park itself closes at 12:00 midnight. Attendance is estimated at this point to be about 8,000 on Friday and 10,000 for Saturday. That's significant for this event and a considerable increase over the event that took place earlier at Chuck Chansey Park. The promoters are taking over responsibility for the park, for that $100,000. They are basically responsible for everything that happens inside the park Friday, Saturday, and the cleanup on Sunday. In addition to the volunteers, they have a team of 125 workers in the park throughout the weekend that will be handling security, along with logistics and cleanup. And then our Fresno Police will have 25 officers in the event and another 40 motors working outside specifically on DUI. Now, traffic obviously is gonna be a concern for us during those two days, especially on Friday. The city of Fresno is closing off Audubon Drive between Friant and Del Mar for two full days. We'll start at 8:00 AM on Friday and then 11:30 PM on Saturday. That's to help facilitate all of the trucks, the equipment, everything that's gonna be coming in to stage the event, and then obviously the cleanup afterwards. We're expecting significant traffic around the Friant Road Corridor, especially during rush hour on Friday afternoon, so people traveling in the Woodward Park area should be prepared for some delays. We've also asking the folks at Caltrans and Alerta Life to provide message boards on Highway 41, avoiding, asking motorists heading northbound on 41 to avoid the Friant and 41 exit, especially during 3:00 to 7:00 PM on Friday, May the 18th. So that's also asking them to provide alternative routes. Alerta Life is also providing message boards for the residential streets, starting Friday. Friant, westbound Shepherd, Paul Manise, and northbound Blackstone to alert commuters about the event that's coming up. This is very similar to the kind of signage that we do for the annual Two Cities Marathon and Half Marathon that goes up and down Friant and the corridor there. Parking, as you can see by the map here, we've identified approximately 2,500 parking spaces within Woodward Park. That's set up by the map there, and thanks to the hard work of Parks Director Parvin Nellens and his team to make sure that we have significant, and we believe sufficient, parking inside the park to handle the crowds that'll be coming in. We'll have special rates that will be in effect for both Friday and Saturday. That will be handled by S&amp;P, but that's also under the control of the promoter. It's gonna be a cash-only system, so we're asking residents to have the cash ready to avoid holding up the line. And if you do decide to park on the grounds, we're advising folks to park early because it is first come, first served. Now, if necessary, we have overflow parking that is set up behind Park Crossing Shopping Center, that's that lot that is right there at the corner of Audubon and Friant. be prepared for some delays. We've also asking the folks at Caltrans and Alertalife to provide message boards on Highway forty-one, avoiding, asking motorists heading northbound on forty-one to avoid the Friant and forty-one exit, especially during three to seven PM on Friday, May the eighteenth. So that's also asking them to provide alternative routes. Alertalife is also providing message boards for the residential streets, starting Friday. Friant, westbound Shepherd, Paul Manise, and northbound Blackstone to alert commuters about the event that's coming up. This is very similar to the kind of signage that we do for the annual two-cities marathon and half marathon that goes up and down Friant and the corridor there. Parking. As you can see by the map here, we've identified approximately twenty-five hundred parking spaces within Woodward Park. That's set up by the map there and thanks to the hard work of Parks Director Parvin Nellens and his team to make sure that we have significant, and we believe sufficient, parking inside the park to handle the crowds that'll be coming in. We'll have special rates that will be in effect for both Friday and Saturday. That will be handled by S and P, but that's also under the control of the promoter. It's going to be a cash-only system, so we're asking residents to have the cash ready to avoid holding up the line. And if you do decide to park on the grounds, we're advising folks to park early because it is first come, first served. Now, if necessary, we have overflow parking that is set up behind Park Crossing Shopping Center. That's that lot that is right there at the corner of Audubon and Friant, catty-corner from Woodward Park. And if that gets full, we do have, although we don't think it's going to be necessary, another lot that is close to knees on First Street if we need that available overflow. There are several rules that we have about event parking. No event parking permitted within the Parks Crossing Shopping Center. And those folks will be monitoring and, and moving folks out if necessary. Also, no parking allowed in surrounding residential neighborhoods. We're posting no event parking signs in the surrounding neighborhoods. The promoter is also going to have personnel stationed along roads like Shepherd, Fort Washington, Millbrook, and Cole that are in the vicinity there, within like a half a mile walking distance during the event. There's no overnight parking allowed in Woodward Park, which, if you remember the old slogan, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here. Everybody will have to move out Friday night and come back in and pay for parking for the additional day. There's no alcohol consumed outside of specially designated event areas. So they're going to have fencing around there where they can have alcohol, but you're not going to be allowed to be walking around the rest of the park and, more importantly, taking those, those beers you didn't finish back to wherever your cars are. So that's going to be important, too. As you know, camping in the city of Fresno is prohibited, so there won't be any overnight stays there. And the police will be actively monitoring the area during that two-day event. So with all that parking going on, all of the traffic that's been happening, obviously we want to promote alternative transportation options for folks. And we're very excited. Our folks at Fax and the Department of Transportation here at the city have done a terrific job. We've come up with an idea that's called Fax to the Fest. And it's basically the Route One service on BRT between Kings Canyon and Clovis and all the way up to Friant and Audubon. Now, you can see by the map up there that traditionally the Route One BRT Express runs only to Fresno and Friant. But we are going to extend that just for those folks that want to travel by bus to Grizzly Fest to be able to utilize the old bus stop that's at the corner of Friant and Audubon, just for this event. Those buses will be running every fifteen minutes between two PM and twelve forty-five AM, both Friday and Saturday. Now, as you know, parking at Manchester, we've secured parking, thanks to working with Mo McNunu from Manchester Center. If folks want to ride the BRT, they can park for free at Manchester Center, and the fare is only a dollar twenty-five both ways. So we hope that that will be an incentive to take public transportation. And the riders can purchase those two single-ride tickets at any BRT ticket vending machine location. We also have the promoters providing something that is called Fest Drive. Fest Drive is a company that basically handles shuttle service for all of the major music festivals around the United States, including Coachella. So these, these folks are top in the industry. They've got Fest Drive running this year event, so we have prepaid shuttles that will run, if you see the maps, the Fresno State University, that's lot P twenty, that's the right-hand map, that's near the corner of Cedar and Barstow. And then from Tioga Sequoia Beer Garden, where folks will park at the Spiral Garage, walk to Sequoia, and can take the shuttle there. Those shuttles will be running every day from one thirty. I continuously threw the last shuttle leaving the park at one AM if necessary. They'll have some limited coverage during the evening hours. The cost of that two-day shuttle is twenty dollars. If you want to buy it individually for each day, that'll be twelve dollars apiece. And then, of course, ride-sharing is always very popular, especially with, we, we know for the fans that'll be coming for this concert. The promoter has acquired the services of both Uber and Lyft that are providing ride-share service. There are fifteen hundred Uber and Lyft drivers that are on-call during that weekend. And for those that are called to be able to use that service, they will be staging in the blue spot there. That's the parking lot in the Cashin parking lot that is off of Friant. So there's a lot of information out there, and obviously we've got to try to do our best to get it out to the public as, as quickly and efficiently as possible. And that's why I'm very pleased to say that as far as public outreach, the communications office is working with the promoter on a comprehensive public relations plan over the next eight days. It's actually already started, but the, the most stuff will be happening over the next week or so, including print, radio, TV, and social media. We have set up a special event website at Fresno.gov that has a button on the very front page. It has all the information that you've been given here during this workshop and some links to websites like GrizzlyFestival.com. There was a, the website has the ride-share pickup, the drop-off points, shuttle services, and what have you. We've also given that information to our one-call center, and they're going to be able to handle calls there in case folks are calling and have any questions about the event before, during, and even after. Media advisory was set up yesterday to send to all local press with links and maps included. We're in the process of setting up interviews this week with ABC Thirty, KC Twenty-four, Forty-seven, CBS Forty-seven, Fox Twenty-six, KMJ, and the Fresno Bee. And then the promoter and I are working together on setting up morning show radio interviews with the stations that play the music from the artists appearing at the event, so that's modern rock, pop, and hip-hop stations. Of course, from communications, especially again with the, the demographics of the audience, social media is going to be used extensively. We start with the city's Facebook and Twitter accounts, and you're going to be seeing regular information and promotional information that's going to be done during the next week or so. The promoter has their own social media accounts that have been going on extensively through this. We'll also set up a citywide notification on Nextdoor and Fresco, so these will be push notifications that will go out to all of those subscribers citywide. And then I just recently had the chance to send an email to both the staffs for D Six and for D Two, to let them know all the information here, to be able to share with their email lists. And one of the other things that I wanted to emphasize with all of this, and you can see, we've, we've met extensively over the last couple of months or so, trying to make sure that we've covered all of our bases here. I think the important thing to, to recognize is that with all of this happening, there is no direct expense for the city of Fresno. The promoter is handling all the direct expenses. We, of course, have staffing and some other things that will be involved indirectly, but it is a net positive, obviously, for the city of Fresno. Just in closing, I want to emphasize that the city takes the residents' concerns very seriously, and that's why we went above and beyond just the legal requirements for the event to ensure that every aspect of this two-day music festival was, been discussed, analyzed, and worked through properly. I especially want to give credit to, because, you know, I, I get the sunshine of being able to get up here and provide the workshop, but there are so many people that have worked literally weeks and hours and months on, on trying to make this event as smooth as possible for not only the promoter, but for the city and its residents. I want to thank everybody in the staffs from Parks, Police and Fire, the Public Works Department, DARM, Finance, Risk Management, City Attorney's Office, and the mayor's and city manager's office, who worked diligently on the preparations and the logistics for this event. I also want to thank council members Bretafeld and Brandow. It was essential to get your input and oversight on this, and I think, I hope, that as this event kind of comes to fruition over the next week or so, that we'll all be satisfied with the work that the, the city and the promoters have done. And finally, Aaron and Vartan Hakimian, they worked with us to comply with our needs, to understand our concerns, and do everything they could humanly possible to ensure that this event was something that we can actually celebrate when it's done and look forward to future events like this happening in the city of Fresno. And with that, as I mentioned, I've got staff members and myself available for any questions you might have.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank the mayor and all the staff that have been involved in this. We sat in a, a meeting with Parks and Police and all of the staff. I would leave out people. I think everyone has taken the concerns of our residents very seriously. And I'm very hopeful and optimistic this is going to be a very successful event. Everybody's going to feel positive about it. And I think, I think everybody's moved in the right directions. I appreciate the promoter's work, all the work that they've done. And I think it's an important point that you made, Mark, that all the policing that are going to be involved, and that's going to be paid for by the promoter. So that's a very important point. So I just hope that it's a, it's a very successful event. It's coming up, there's a lot of excitement about it. I know I've got council members who I guess are going to be on the stage there, rocking and singing, and so that's a, that's a great thing. So again, I just want to thank everybody from where we were many months ago to where we are today. I think it's been a real team effort, and I think this is going to, to come off fairly smoothly, and hopefully there won't be any difficulties. I don't think there will be with all of the work that's been involved. So I just want to thank everybody for it.
Great, thank you. So that wraps up that item. We're going to go ahead and continue with the agenda. So we do have approval of minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of April? I think it's April nineteenth. No changes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion passes seven-zero. Next, we will go on to council member reports and comments.
I punched up.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank all the staff again for that presentation on Grizzly Fest. This is, this is going to really, really be a huge success for our community and our businesses. I wanted to start again by wishing everyone that can hear us and see us and in the audience Happy Mother's Day. Sunday's your day. Every day is your day, but Sunday is the special day. So Happy Mother's Day to everybody. Last week I attended the Fresno State Spirits Award with President Castro, and they recognize and make a presentation to exemplary students who engage in community service. And as, as kind of a side note, this is part and parcel of the commitment to civil benefits from the university. For instance, there's over one million hours each year contributed by the university. So the kids get together, they do numerous community projects, and the total is just over one million hours each and every year. So hats off to Fresno State again, the crown jewel of my district. I was there yesterday for another inspiring moment. They have a program called Fresno State Veterans Education Programs. It's the only veterans program offered in the UC system for the entire state. And Provost Zaleski started that, and she has a great, great team. And to listen to these veterans of all ages who are now come to the point where they want to enhance their education and they want to attend the university, this program enables them to refine their reading, writing, math skills, and other things you need to do to get into the university. And this team helps this, yesterday, seven veterans, seven combat veterans, six men and one woman, to matriculate, as they say, to Fresno State in the next semester. So it's a fantastic program. Congratulations to all of the people at Fresno State and to our veterans, who wish to encourage them to pursue their dreams and to fulfill their expectations by furthering their education. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Bretafeld.
Yes, I just wanted to do a shout-out, thank you to Richard Salinas in Code Enforcement, provided a very quick response to our constituents' concern, and very grateful. Thank you.
Councilmember Brandow.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, as you know, last week on Thursday, we had our first community outreach for the West of Ninety-Nine area-specific plan, and I think it went well. There was a good presentation from staff. We do have some nervous and concerned residents that live in the area that don't quite understand what's happening out there, and we're going to work with them. That's our pledge from the city of Fresno. But there's going to be a lot of great changes. Councilman Baines, your district is part of that, so it includes council districts one, two, and three. And it's going to be the next growth area for the city of Fresno, so we have to do the preparation for that growth. And I think it's, going forward, it's going to be a great thing for our community. We do have some nervous folks, and if anybody's listening or needs to take a meeting, Councilmember Soraya and I pledged to, to meet one-on-one with folks if that's necessary. But I think overall, it's a great thing to get the ball rolling on that specific plan. And then on Friday, I wanted to mention that I went to the Pine Dale Elementary Carnival, and it's an annual event that they do, and they always ask me to be a judge of a salsa contest, salsa eating contest, not dancing, okay? And, and this, this year I was upgraded to the hot category, and I paid for it about eleven thirty that night, but we had a lot of great salsa out there and a lot of great events for the kids, so thank you.
Councilmember Olivia.
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. I wanted to give a report of, on what I was doing at the League of California Cities Board of Directors meeting. I was not present for the, the most recent council meeting we had. We had a, a special meeting with Governor Brown, who advised us that we need to be very, very careful moving forward. The governor said that we are in, I think, our, our eighth year of economic recovery right now. As you know, California was recently upgraded to be the, the fifth-largest economy in the world. However, he said that it's unprecedented in the history of the United States, eight years econ, eight years with economic growth with no recession. And so Governor Brown sounded a lot like, you know, a Ronald Reagan or a George Duke Magin when he cautioned the leaders of the cities that there is going to be a recession, and there's going to be a recession in the next couple, three years. And that, I think statewide unemployment right now is four percent. As many of you know, unemployment is higher than that in the city of Fresno traditionally. It always is. But he said, and, and the quote from him was, "Guys, this is Nirvana." With, with every city and the state government running the highest revenues that they've ever run, and unemployment at four percent, he says, "It'll never be this good again in your lifetimes." He said the recession is coming, and his advice was to make sure that, that we're fiscally very, very intelligent and very conservative in what we do, because there is a downturn coming. When there is a downturn, there's going to be increased unemployment and tax revenues will fall. And so it's going to be, I won't be here, Member Baines won't be here, but it will be on your watches that that downturn comes and those tax revenues fall. And so this is not coming from a, a conservative budget think-tank. This is coming from Governor Jerry Brown. So I just wanted to share that with you. Of course, the other cities let out an awful groan because every other city in California can't afford to pay their pensions. We're the only city that can. But there's going to be a hit to the general fund, folks, on your watch. And, and that's not coming from me. It's coming from our governor. So the, the votes that, that we take here in the next six months and the next couple of years are very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Levy. Thank you for that report. Just have a couple things to report on. Also, I just, I want to give a big thanks, just as Councilmember Brandow mentioned, to with the West Area Specific Plan taking place. I know that the staff has done a tremendous amount of work to get to that Thursday, May third, meeting. So, you know, thank you, Jennifer, to, to you and to your, your team. Rodney did a terrific job, if he's listening. You know, I want to thank him because he was able to moderate that and do a great presentation at that meeting. And so, city manager, thank you guys for, for the work that you guys are doing on that. We're excited about the end result. I also just wanted to mention that I've been tracking this whole kind of census process, and I know that in the last few months I, I brought up the issue to the city manager, and I'm hoping to bring just kind of a workshop next, next council meeting, just so that we have a better understanding of how the census impacts the city of Fresno and potential future revenues. And so hoping to work with the administration and the council to see how we can assure that we get an accurate count of hard-to-count populations. I think it's a very, very important issue for the city of Fresno. And so just excited that I was part of this. I was a panelist at the census stakeholder meeting, so there's groups, community-based organizations that are being activated. The governor's office actually put this stakeholder meeting together. The state wants to make sure that we are partners with them so that our communities do get accurately counted. So there'll be more conversation about that, at least from my end, because I'm very interested in assuring that we get every single dollar that we can get from the federal government. So bring it back to our community. And then lastly, I just want to thank the city manager on having, actually, we have an officer here present today just for all the council members, so that you guys know. I know that this was discussed in terms of adding additional security during a council meeting, so I want to thank the officer for being here, present this morning, and so that all the council members know that. Moving forward, we will be having an officer present per our request. Next, we are going to go, we had one item that is contested, but I know people have been contested from the consent calendar, but I know that some people have been waiting for some time on a couple of the timed items. So what I want to do, who pulled the item? You did, right? Do you think it'll be quick? Yeah? Okay, so I think the item may be quick, so maybe we'll hear it so that we can finish the consent calendar, so we'll go ahead and call the staff. Item one G, I believe. Item one G, I believe.
Good morning, Council. Scott Moser, Public Works Department.
Scott, so I pulled this item for an update. It's something that council voted on, I think, a year ago, and it has to do with options on property for the heavy maintenance facility for high-speed rail. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So is there an update on what's going on with the choice of the heavy maintenance facility? Has there been any news on that? And then what's it been like, working with the property owners for the, with these options? And then how long do the options extend before we would have to pay them if we are not awarded? All of that kind of stuff.
I know Larry Westerlin, our Economic Development Director, would like to handle those particular questions. So I'll turn it over to Larry.
Good morning, Council President. Councilmember Brendow. Larry Westerlin, Director of Economic Development for the City of Fresno. So this two hundred, approximately $250,000 would go for our second-year extension on the land that we have an option on for the heavy maintenance facility. Our, we have been working with the property owners. They understand that we want to extend it for twelve months. Would be our, we would be timed out this time next May for the two years that we had agreed on. And so far, everybody has been okay with that for this next twelve-month extension.
Larry, it's a, was it a two-year deal, or is this, 'cause I think we just voted on it last year. We've only been in this one year, right?
Yes, that's correct. So there were twelve months, and then a second twelve months, for a total of twenty-four months, yes.
Okay. And so what is the extension in about, if we're still inside of the two-year?
So we, we did the first twelve months, hoping that we would have a decision by high-speed rail within the first twelve months, so that we wouldn't have to do an additional $250,000. High-speed rail has not made that decision as of yet, and so we do need to extend it to get the option on the additional twelve months.
So does that mean it's a second option for those properties? In other words, did we lose any money for, for those options to purchase that, those properties?
Well, there's no, no money lost, other than the, the $250,000 that was used to secure that property for that two hundred, for that twelve months. That, that won't be coming back to us.
Well, to me, that's money lost.
Right, but...
So, so, $250,000, and how many properties was it again?
Um, there are, there are different parcels. There's about seven owners and twelve parcels.
Okay. So the way the option worked was, we paid $250,000 for the option to purchase the entire property if we get chosen.
Right.
By high-speed rail for the heavy maintenance facility, right?
Yes.
And so these landowners agreed, and so they took certain amounts of money for an option. Since we were not chosen yet, or not awarded yet, they get, they get that chunk of money, and they get to keep that money, right?
Yes.
And so that's theirs, and then now we need another round of that?
Yes. So in what was originally approved by the council was $500,000. This is just the AAR for the additional $250,000 in the second year.
What was the most that any one landowner was awarded in that option?
You know, I don't have that in front of me. I think it was roughly $50,000.
Okay. So they get to keep that 50K, and they might get to keep this other 50K. What happens if we're not selected in the next, by next May?
Then they will, they will keep that money. The money in the last twelve months and the money in this twelve months. So we believe and hopeful that we will get selected in the next twelve-month period. We're talking with the High-Speed Rail Authority as we go about that, and when they're gonna make that decision. And if we are the ones that get chosen for that, which we think by all measures, we are the best site for it, then the money that has been invested so far will go to the total purchase price of the property. So we'll get the credit for the $250,000 for last year and the $250,000 for this year on the purchase price.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
The screen is clear. Councilmember Bretafell.
Larry. So, this is basically to hold these property owners from doing something else with their property until, until the high-speed rail makes some decision.
Well, yes, it wasn't really to hold it so that they didn't do something else with their property. What it was really to be able to go, as the city and county of Fresno, to be able to go to the High-Speed Rail Authority and say, "We have control of that property." That was our biggest detriment, when you looked at the different sites up and down, the alignment that are vying for this piece of this, this project, is that some folks are, some of the property in other cities is owned by one owner, and the one owner said that they would give that property to high-speed rail. So they have control over that piece of property. What we're doing this is to be able to say, and we have been able to say that to the High-Speed Rail Authority, "We have control over the property. We know what it's gonna cost to purchase that property." And of course, what Fresno Works did through Measure C was a $25 million that was set aside of Measure C that would then pay for the property if we get chosen.
Okay, so it'll be Measure C money that's holding it, it's Measure C money that would purchase it. Do you know, and what would the cost be?
I didn't bring the number with me, but it was for the full acreage, it was about $9 million.
Okay. And you believe that they're gonna tell you this year whether or not they're gonna select us?
We are hopeful of that. I am going next week to the High-Speed Rail Authority meeting, the board meeting in San Jose. Leanne Eggers with EDC, Tony Boron, some others, and myself are going to present, again, our site and our project to the High-Speed Rail Authority Board. There's been a lot of turnover in the board. Some of them don't know or appreciate or fully understand the, the site-specific attributes, and that we have control over it. So we're hopeful that they will decide by the end of this year, or the very latest first quarter of next year.
Okay, and, and you said they set aside twenty-some-odd million dollars out of Measure C for this?
There was $25 million set aside for this project.
Okay. And if we're selected, what are you looking at in terms of jobs that would be created?
They have talked somewhere between 1,200 and 1,500 jobs, and, and most of these, of course, are on a state pay scale, a lot more trade, metalworking, higher-end kind of jobs at that state pay scale.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Hey Larry, speaking of that, what are some of the other anticipated benefits when we receive that yard, our maintenance yard?
Well, aside from the, the jobs, that would be a huge, really, really huge, the other part of it would be, is that this would be the first heavy maintenance facility for a high-speed rail anywhere in the United States. We anticipate and hope that we would see a number of manufacturers and suppliers that would all wanna be located close to or next to the facility itself. So that's always been anticipated, that there would be a spinover effect or spinoff effect from the facility.
Sounds like billions of dollars of spinover effect, potentially.
Yes, sir.
And so what you're saying, my understanding is, so we need to be shovel-ready to be in a position for high-speed rail to select Fresno for that very, very important heavy maintenance yard.
As close as we can be to shovel-ready as possible, yes.
Very good. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. The screen is clear. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilmember Baines. I'll make the second. Any opposition?
Yes.
One? So the motion carries six, one, with Councilmember Brendow. Voting, oh. Oh, five, one, sorry, I didn't see. Councilmember Olivier absent. Five, one. Next, we're gonna go a little bit out of order. I know that there's a number of people that are waiting for some timed items, so we're gonna go with the scheduled communication first, because the speakers will have three minutes, and then after the scheduled communication, we will go to the, I believe it's a 10:15. Or sorry, that, after that, we'll go to the 10, 10, 10 a.m. hearing. That's the annual action plan after the scheduled communication. So first, I have the 10:15 scheduled communication, appearance by, I don't know if I'm gonna say this name right, Gaida, Gaida Maza and Cesar Casamayor. Do you wanna come on up? You have scheduled communication, scheduled communication, so if you guys both wanna come up, you will, if you can state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes.
Peace. Good morning. My name is Cesar Casamayor. I live in District Three.
Good day, Maza, and I live in District One.
So I wanna first say thank you to Clint Olivier for, for allowing opportunities for communities to come together and have a better understanding of how the city is approaching the legalization of marijuana, and also for Mr. Baines for also being a part of, allowing for a community to have a better understanding and dialogue. I wish we could have more dialogue. So my main concern is, we sent the letter out in March to City Council, bringing up some concerns that we had. Real briefly, if you guys don't have it, we can send it back to you guys. But some of the important things was the, we wanted to make sure that there is a committee composed that can continuously have dialogue and conversation with HDL as their findings are coming forth. We want to make sure that there's a better approach of having transparency on regards of allowing for communities that have been impacted by the war on drugs to be able to come into this industry, out of the black market, but into a better playing field. And we also want to have conversations with you guys at a better opportunity to talk about impact fund and also equity on regards of how this industry is going to be benefiting the communities that have been mostly impacted by the war on drugs. And I think this is something very important to those people that are representing District Three, District Five, Seven, and all, and everybody else. But we would definitely, would love to have an opportunity to, to have a conversation more in-depth about, about our impact fund that we have. We are the people's dispensary. I wanna say that we come from a community organizing background, and also from, you wanna say a little bit about?
Just to keep it brief, I'm a clinical therapist, so we have the mental health background as well.
So in closing, I just wanna say that what we're asking is, this industry, we know that the city passed the resolution in December, we know that the city is looking at the findings that HDL has done, and we know that there's going to be an opportunities for communities to have dialogue and conversations. But I think, again, like we've seen historically, I've seen as a, as a resident, that decisions get made, the community gets about two weeks to have conversation, and then things get implemented. And I think that because this, this is such a, a, a great opportunity to be ahead of everybody else, and we've learned lessons from past, such as the Act of Transportation Plan, things like this TCC, that there could really be really good communication with community and transparency if we are having those dialogues. I don't think that it is, it is, it is right to be hearing rumors outside of, of City, City Hall about people knowing things about the HDL findings and having conversations, and our community having a more transparent opportunity to know what's going on and not having to wait. So I'd just say that we're open, we, we have a really good plan. We presented to Mr. Baines and Mr. Olivier. I hope that you guys are having conversations on what equity will look like to our communities, and want to just ask...
Can you please wrap up?
Can we get, so I just wanna ask, can we have a more in-depth conversation, not just with two City Councilmembers, but with other City Councilmembers, so we can have a better understanding of how we're going to, as a city, approach this industry in a more insightful and transparent way?
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments.
Will anybody besides Olivier and Baines be open to meeting with community to figure this out?
You can request a meeting in my office. I'd be happy to meet.
We have.
Well, I'll make sure that my staff comes to follow up on that.
Council President, I'd like to ask Cesar a question or two.
Yes, sir.
So, Cesar, are you saying that there's not, there hasn't been, I, I felt, now it's not my issue, you know that, but, but are you saying there hasn't been enough community engagement? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I think that, I wanna be very respectful. Mr. Olivier and Mr. Baines have been very forthcoming with having dialogue with community. And I think that we would like to have a better opportunity to communicate with, with you, Mr. Brendow, Mr. Bretafell, and everybody else.
Well, I, I, I'm definitely open to meeting. I think, you know, we'll be on some different sides on some of that, but I, I'm certainly open to meeting, but I'm myself, but I'm more interested in, so you've requested a, a citizens committee to be formed or something like that? Is that, isn't that what your email said, something like that?
So, yeah, yeah, we, we requested a steering committee as a part of the process.
Has that been, has that been done, or has anybody approached you?
As far as we know, it, no one's approached us. I mean, we've talked with Councilmember Olivier and Councilman Baines, so, you know, they understand the process in depth, but we have yet to meet with you all individually.
Well, I'll definitely take a meeting, for sure.
Excellent, thank you. So we'll be following up. Madam President, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Councilmember Bretafell.
Yeah, I just wanted to say the same thing. If these gentlemen or anybody else wants to meet with me on the issue, I'm, I'm always happy to, to meet. I always, you know, that's, that's our job, and so I have no problem with that. I mean, obviously, my position has been clear, but I'm happy to sit down with anybody. We don't have to agree to have a meeting. So anytime you wanna meet, just, just call my office, and we'll, we'll meet.
Thank you. Next, we have 10:15, number two, scheduled communication. Carmen Navarro, do you wanna come on down and state your name, address for the record, and you will also have three minutes?
Good morning, Council President, Soria, and council members. My name is Carmen Navarro.
Carmen, you can lower the, the mic a little. There you go. A little bit more if you want.
My name is Carmen Navarro. I live at 1241 North Vagades. I was at the meetings of the task force assigned to study the needs of senior citizens within the Fresno city. I was also at the meeting on November the ninth, where a detailed presentation was made to council members regarding senior citizen needs. At that time, the Assistant City Manager promised a, a plan, a business plan, that would be provided to establish a senior center and to be able to present the information to city council members in order to get money in the 2018-19 budget. We have not seen the business plan, and I'd be happy to pick up a copy if somebody will let me know where to do so. We have been using an incorrect number for the number of citizens that are over sixty in Fresno. I was corrected on that number. Even the Fresno Bee has used the number of 57,000. We're actually 97,000. Dr. Bill, who is a professor of gerontology and a scientist on the issue of aging, corrected me. And so some of those 97,000, no, no doubt, we are not only taxpayers, but high-propensity voters, so no doubt, some of those voters ushered you into office. I would like to be able to take a look at that plan. I would like to be able to tell our senior citizens that, yes, there is money in the budget coming up to establish a senior center. Not only would we be grateful, but so would the city council members of the City of Clovis. You no doubt understand that because we have no senior center, residents of Fresno are using the Clovis Senior Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Councilmember Olivier?
Thank you, Council President, for, for calling on me, and thank you, Carmen, and friends, for coming out here today. Everything that Carmen said is 100% true. Everything she said is, is correct. The, the business plan, as I understand it, has been prepared and will be brought to this council in a workshop in, in the next month or so, in the coming weeks. I think it's pretty startling what she said about the seniors going to Clovis. That's where they go, because we offer very limited services for our seniors, and, and so they have to go to Clovis to take part in, in what they're doing over there. Over there, the... Clovis to take part in what they're doing over there. Over there, the, and we presented the white paper that the task force did to this body, you know, two, three, four months ago. In Clovis, their senior center is paid for through the general fund, and that's, they just built a brand-new one and sold the old one to Samhain Law School to become part of that campus. But, yeah, they pay for it out of the general fund. That's going to be, that's going to be the big talker as we move forward amongst the people sitting up here. So, I just talked to city manager, and that's going to be coming forward, and we'll get you a copy of that in the next few weeks when that is ready to go. But we'll get that to you. And, I mean, obviously, I spent so, I couldn't work on a senior center during the Great Recession because there absolutely wasn't any money to do a senior center. The best, and FUSD that provides those services, senior dance and the other senior classes, through adult school, used to be free for seniors. During the Great Recession, they started charging 35, 40 bucks a class. And then, of course, there were far fewer seniors that went to those classes at Manchester. But Fresno Unified is still going ahead with those classes. But in the meantime, they closed the senior lounge, the adult school lounge that was across the mall, or it was actually next door to the dance studio. And so, that used to be a place to congregate. That's gone now. I know that our general fund predicament is a lot better than it was during the Great Recession, but it's not a whole heck of a lot better than it was during the Great Recession. So, I know that there are some solutions coming down the pike in terms of seniors' services in this city, especially if we can, because we voted to approve the Lingo Project at McKinley and Blackstone, which includes a significant amount of square footage for a senior center. But that may be two, three years, four years before that building is actually constructed, and they hand us the keys to that. So, it's a question of, you know, what do we do between now and then? And of course, the white paper said, get a temporary senior center going with the ultimate goal of building a permanent one. But we're talking about a lot of money. So, we have to identify that money, and I think that it's an important thing for this council and this administration to work on. It's probably not going to happen while I'm here, but we try to make it happen. But at least we'll get the business plan and understand what we need to do, and then it becomes about priorities in council. I would ask that you vote to prioritize seniors. So, we'll see in the next few weeks. City Manager, you want to add?
No, I think you covered everything we discussed, but we do anticipate the workshop happening by the beginning of June at the latest, and at that point, we'll present the business plan that Parvin and Bruce had worked on before Bruce left.
Okay, I have a-
Thank you. Councilmember Brenda?
Yeah. So, Councilman Olivier, you've been in discussions with the administration. Is there money in this budget for the senior center that we had met about and talked about earlier in the year?
I think that, I think that going forward, that depends on what this body wants to do. The business plan or the white paper the task force turned in called for a certain square footage, and that number escapes my memory right now. A certain square footage, how many? 7,000 square feet, which, that's not a lot. And I think in the McKinley-Blackstone project, what is it, 12,000 they're giving, or 10? It's a lot. I mean, it's not as much as Clovis, but, so, it depends how we want to craft it and how we want to tailor it. And I want everybody's input. I mean, obviously, this is something that's near and dear to my heart, but I think at any, I think I've heard passion from all of you on this. Depends what we want to do as a community. Is there going to be a dance floor? Is there going to be a set area with tables, or do we fold the tables and put them out on the dance floor kind of thing? What kind of services do we want to offer? How long does it, do we want it to be open? These are the things that should be covered in the business plan. How long do we want it to be open? I've heard eight to two, what did the task force say? Eight to five, or eight to two would be adequate. Eight to two might be adequate. So, it just depends. How many bells and whistles? It's not going to be Disneyland like they just built in Clovis.
Yeah, so is there money set aside for that?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Then my next question is, so, kind of working with the definition of senior centers, like the Pine Dale Community Center, I know we have some other community centers, and they do serve seniors, but I guess what you're saying is that the senior hot meals program and some of the other programming and events and activities they have for seniors, you don't count that? Or it doesn't sound like that's counted?
No, I mean, there is no purpose-built senior citizen center, like in Long Beach, they have six, and Bakersfield has three, and Sacramento has one with a coffee, with a café in it. I mean, there is no, I mean, Parks Department, it's, I'll get you a white paper again, because all that stuff is listed in there, the boilerplate, but I mean, there are activities that the city provides for senior citizens-
Right.
But they're at a spread-out area. And what we're talking about is something that's different from a senior meal site. It's an actual purpose-built facility for seniors to go to, like they have in Clovis. I mean, we went on a, and I know it's not a genderized item, and I don't want to take up too much time, but we went on a bus tour with the task force, and we looked at Mosqueda, and we looked at Clovis, and we also looked at the Ted C. Will Center, which is a beautiful campus. And while there are activities provided for seniors in a limited capacity at those facilities, there's nothing like, there's no purpose-built senior citizen center like every other city, like Huron and Orange Cove have. We don't have anything like that, so.
Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
I think that, you know, shortly there, we will be having the budget discussions, and I think that it's timely as we continue to hear from our senior representatives that we take those things into consideration, because we know that every budget and every year, we all make motions, and so, it's not, you know, far off that we can't make a motion to include additional dollars. And so, I'm just saying publicly that I would be in support of it, because I do believe that what you guys have, one, put together through this task force, has, is critical, and that our seniors, our seniors in the city of Fresno, the 97,000 that live here, deserve much better than what we provide today. So, I think that it'll be great to have the discussion as we move forward in the budget, and I would be supportive of looking at where we can find dollars to begin to demonstrate that we are willing to invest in our seniors. So, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the 10-10 item, which is the annual action plan.
Council President, we also have translators for Spanish and Monge available.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Good morning, council members. Kelly Furtado with the Department and Resource Management, Department Housing and Community Development Division this morning. And this morning is the second of two required public hearings for the draft 2018 through 2019 Annual Action Plan, a document that is required to receive entitlement funding. The Annual Action Plan, the draft 2018-19 Plan, was published on March 23rd and was available for public review. That period ended on April the 23rd of 2018. Recently, the Housing and Community Development Commission, the HCDC, met and held a public hearing on the same item, on the draft Annual Action Plan, and the comments which were made at that public hearing are detailed in your staff report. Today, I wanted to just note that the council, the council is scheduled to hear and consider and potentially vote on the actual Annual Action Plan on March 24th, so that will not be occurring today. But the-
May, May 20.
Oh, goodness. May 24th, my apologies, is when that is scheduled. And I'll just note that in preparation for that May meeting, the May 24th meeting, all of the public comments that have been received up to this point, as well as the required city responses, have been included in the staff packages loaded into Granicus for that upcoming item. At this time, however, the city is recommending that the council obtain the views of the public and the comments of the public through today's scheduled hearing. So, that is the purpose of today's meeting. There will be no action requested from the council.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So, we're going to go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? If so, you want to come on forward? If you can state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Miriam Poles.
Do you want to pull the microphone down? There we go.
Hi, my name is Miriam Poles. I live on the Hidalgo area.
And your address?
My address is 526 North Bond Street. We want to thank Mayor Brand, City Council, and the Housing and Community Development Commission for their support in securing the CDBG funds last year in installed new sidewalks near the Hidalgo Elementary School. The letter was written on behalf of the Hidalgo Neighbors and Communities, Hidalgo Neighbors and Actions, to request additional CDBG funding to complete the sidewalks in our community from First Street to Cedar Avenue and Belmont Avenue to Harvey Avenue. We believe sidewalks are important to our community for several reasons. They provide a safe place for children to walk to and from school and the local community park remain playground. Individuals in our community who are disabled and using walkers or wheelchairs find themselves in a precarious position when sidewalks are not present. When there is rain or operation cleanup, the water and trash in the streets makes it more difficult to move safely through the community and using the streets. We regret that we, no more residents were not able to attend the meeting this morning, as most of the work, them work, and are not able to come during the day hours. In place of residents, we sent this letter to represent our community. Thank you for listening and addressing our needs for sidewalks. Sincerely, Adelina Aguilar, Addie Carr, Marcos Chapa, Kim Cinteres, Jessica Correa, Dora Morales, Naomi Rodriguez, Julie Smith, Elizabeth Terrace, and the Hidalgo Neighbors in Action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? You can just state your name, address for the record. You don't need to fill out the card. You'll be fine. So, just state your name, address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. Nicole Linder with the Marjorie Mason Center, 1600 M Street is our administration office. Thank you for the opportunity to present with you today. In the Annual Action Plan, our funds in three different categories designated for the Marjorie Mason Center, and I just wanted to strongly encourage your support for the Annual Action Plan as listed. As most of you are probably aware, it will be 40 years since the murder of Marjorie Mason, and yet domestic violence still seems to be a rampant issue in our community, with nearly 6,000 calls to Fresno PD on an annual basis. And last year, six people in our community lost their lives to domestic violence. So, having a safe place to stay is one of the only things that will keep those homicides from continuing to occur. The support is for 129 bed safe house in downtown Fresno, which is not only a huge safe house in our community, it's the largest in the state of California and one of the largest in the nation. And so, we really appreciate your support that will allow us to house thousands and thousands of people next year, mostly women and children. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item?
It is afternoon yet, right?
No, morning still.
Still afternoon. Well, it's been a long morning for me, Council President Soria. Good morning, Todd Cook, Cook Land Company, and a proud 10-year member of the Marjorie Mason Center Board. I will be very brief. Nicole made some of the points I wanted to make. I was having, actually, a conversation with Councilmember Brandau yesterday at a different event, and I think it's fair to say that you were rather surprised to learn that the Marjorie Mason Center is, in fact, the largest domestic violence shelter in the state of California, certainly the largest on the West Coast, and by most metrics, one of the largest in the country. And why is that? It's because we have that big of a problem here in this community. So, your support is absolutely critical. Nicole mentioned that last year, we had 6,000 calls to the, just the Fresno PD, that we get, we average 6,000 to 8,000 calls a year. That's 20 a day. That's over 20 a day. That's an incredible resource, expenditure of your resources. So, I encourage you, and I thank you for your commitment to the Marjorie Mason Center, and I humbly ask that you continue that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name, address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Lenisha Senegal with, at 5143 East Pine, and that's in District Four. I'm standing here today in support of the Annual Action Plan. Our organization is helping others pursue excellence. The Vision View Business Formation Center in the Airport District, just, you know, really thankful for the opportunity to be able to advocate for small business and business, especially that's happening in the Airport District. Part of our growth and learning and just being a part of that area, we're learning so much about the types of activities that are, and the investments that's actually developing right around us. Here it is. We have our airport that has over a million travelers that visit to Fresno. We have four major hotels, now a fifth hotel that attracts over 200,000 travelers that just stay right there in those hotels. So, as we're preparing to gear up for small business growth and just, you know, really being able to create the types of business that will, you know, be able to keep those travelers entertained and allowing them to access business resources, you have a number of organizations. We have at Vision View over 19 small businesses that are growing together, leveraging resources together. One of the largest hubs here in Fresno now, which, you know, we would love to invite you out to come and take, you know, a view of the site there, similar to our community center, you know, Bitwise Downtown in the Airport District. We, too, are developing a center that you would be proud of, that could be the hub of our small businesses that are, that are growing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. Esther Delahaye with the Lowell Community Development Corporation, 250 North Calaveras. I'm here just to, again, say thank you for this budget, for this plan. It's been very encouraging, as I've worked over the last several years with community benefit organizations, to now see finally the funding, the CDBG money, being allocated to some of the great work that's going on in our communities around Fresno. So, I just want to say thank you. It is really important. We are supportive of this budget. We, too, have two applications in there. This year, there was available funding for capacity building in organizations, and as a CDC cohort member, kind of, just, I just want to speak for just a second on how important that is to be able to help build the capacity of neighborhood organizations across our communities that are building in each of the districts for a better Fresno, really. And so, there are five, almost six CDCs, and then a few EDCs, Economic Development Corporations in Fresno, that are working in southeast, southwest, west, central Fresno, and in downtown Fresno as well. And so, thank you for this action plan. I strongly support it, and it's very encouraging to see this money getting put back into the community, into some amazing organizations that are doing some amazing work all across our city. Thank you.
I'm Diane Carberry with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Fresno County. We had submitted a proposal. It's to support the three clubs that we have in city-owned parks, the Fink White Park, the Eldorado Park, and Inspiration Park. For the last five years- For the last five years, we've been providing those services at really no cost to the city. They're aligned with the consolidated plan with the job skills training, gang prevention, life skills training, and the education programs. We serve about 950 kids in those three sites, and with the minimum wage going up and a loss of some of our other grant funding, we are in our proposal hoping that the city will support that project at $25,000 apiece. That would be $75,000 that we're asking for. So it aligns with the consolidated plan, and we appreciate the opportunity and hope you will consider that and encourage you to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Brenda.
Thanks, Council President. So I just want to say, Todd, it was great talking with you yesterday about Marjorie Mason. It was pretty eye-opening, although in reality, I'd done a tour with Nicole earlier this year, and I saw some of the things that you folks need money for over at Marjorie Mason, like the upgrade to the kitchen and how many more people you could serve more effectively with that upgrade. So I'll be very supportive of that. But I have a question. So when are we going to vote on this? Today's just a hearing, correct?
Yes, May 24th. They will be back for a vote.
Okay, May 24th. If anybody needs to take another additional meeting with me, I'd love to take a meeting with anybody, any of the providers that have questions or concerns. So thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Looks like the screen is clear, and so on May 24th, the council will continue to have the opportunity to raise questions or make comments. So I look forward to also just continuing to hear from the community-based organizations that were involved in the process or residents that expressed the needs that exist in our community and see if those needs are being met by the plan that is put forth today. And we'll have a chance to vote on on May 24th. So thank you to the staff for presenting, and also thank you to all the folks that showed up today to lend their support. Thank you. Next, we'll go back to the timed hearings that we had. We had a, we'll start off at the beginning with the 10:00 AM number one hearing by the, our Public Works Department. And this is a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax regarding City of Fresno CFD number 11.
Thank you. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. And this is an annexation to CFD number 11. This is a public hearing. This is in District Five. This is at the request of the landowner, which is Syntex Homes. They are working on a subdivision with 185 lots. The annual cost per lot will be $864.88. We have received the ballots, and all of the landowners are in support of annexation of this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. The screen is clear. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilmember Luis Chavez, second by Councilmember Brenda. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Councilmember Baines, I'm not trying to take up your item. We haven't taken up your item yet. We'll move on to the next hearing, item 10 AM number two. And this is a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax to CFD 11. This is in District Four.
Thank you. This is an additional public hearing for CFD annexation. This is in District Four. This is residential subdivision. This was requested by Granville Homes. They are constructing 108 lots with a small park. The annual assessment per home would be $947.05. We have received the ballots. The landowners are in support of annexation into the district. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? You'll have three minutes. Take your name and address for the record, Jeff.
Good morning. City Council members, Madam President, I'm Jeff Roberts with the Acemi Group, business address 1396 West Hernan in the City of Fresno, speaking on behalf of Granville Homes. And we are in support of the requested action here today and as recommended by staff. Be happy to answer any questions. If not, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll bring it back. The screen is clear.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolo, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Now we'll move on to the 10 AM number three hearing, hearing to adopt resolution and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax to CFD nine, and that is in District Three, Councilmember Baines.
Thank you. CFD annexation. This is into CFD number nine, which is a little different than the residential projects that we just presented on. This CFD number nine is used for multifamily, commercial, and industrial projects. This annexation is in District Three, includes only two parcels, I believe. We have received the ballots from the property owners. They are in support of the annexation. The annual cost is $1,827, and staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll bring it back to the dais. Motion by Councilmember Baines, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we'll go on to item 1005. It's a hearing to vacate a public utility easement on the northwest corner of East Church Avenue and South Chestnut in District Five.
Good morning, Council President, Councilmembers and staff. My name's Jason Cammott, Chief Surveyor of the Public Works Department. I am here to ask council to open up a public hearing that's required for the vacation of a public utility easement on the northwest corner of Chestnut and Church. This hearing was set by resolution of intent 1123D, which was passed by consent on April 19, 2018. It has been properly noticed and posted according to the Streets and Highways Code. Vacation is being requested by the Embry Asset Group. The purpose is to accommodate development associated with Site Plan D 16-111, which is the construction of a Dollar General department store. Staff recommends approval of this vacation request. At this time, I ask council to open the public hearing for discussion, and I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll bring it back to the dais. The screen is clear. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilmember Chavez. I'll second that. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. I believe we've covered all the morning scheduled hearings. Now we'll move on to general administration, and we're going to take item 3B out of order. So we'll go ahead and invite the City Manager's Office. Are you guys presenting? Item three, actions pertaining to the purchase of a building located at 911 H Street.
Good morning, City Council. Laura Gloria, City Manager's Office. The item before you are actions pertaining to 911 H Street, or the purchase of 911 H Street, which currently houses the City of Fresno's fire headquarters. The actions include a purchase and sale agreement for the total price of $4.4 million, an inter-fund loan from the DPU funds for a total of $3.1 million, and the corresponding AAR for that amount. The remaining balance of $1.3 million was previously approved by council during the March 2018 carryover item. At this point, I'd like to invite Chief Donnis up to say a few words.
Good morning, Council. Just a couple of comments. We have gone through a long process of looking at 10 different buildings at least, both in the downtown and in the outskirts of the City of Fresno, to see if it was a better fit. This building is very unique. It allows us to park our multiple apparatus for multi-company drills, and it has a prominence that this fire department, your fire department deserves in the community. We get complimented on this design all the time. It's very functional for us, and we hope you support this.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll bring it back to the dais.
Motion to approve.
So we do have a motion by Councilmember Capriolo and a second by Councilmember Chavez.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Okay. Because it's in my district, so I'll be making the motion. But I wanted to, I wanted to put a couple of things on the record, so the public knows that while we're making this purchase, and I wanted to allow the City Manager a moment. I think this has been great work. It's been a long time coming. Wilma and I talked about this some time ago, and I wanted to make sure the public knew that all the benefits that, I mean, obviously, the functionality of our fire department's very important, but there are also some pretty important fiscal benefits that come with this as well. City Manager, you want to weigh in?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember, and I appreciate your support on this item. So we have been in this lease for quite some time, paying approximately $600,000 a year, and at the current purchase price, we could have probably purchased this building two or three times by now. And so we just think it's the best thing to do for the city from a fiscal standpoint. And we appreciate Chief, and we put you through the wringer for quite some time, showing you many, many buildings. But we do think having fire headquarters in downtown is also very important for the city. And so again, I'm happy, and I know that even though you're already in that building, should council approve this item today, we will be celebrating when escrow closes. So thank you again.
Thank you, City Manager. And I just wanted to say that, and we're very happy that the fire department's going to have a place to call home for the long foreseeable future, and I happily make a motion to approve this item.
Perfect. Councilmember Baines made an additional motion, so that's a motion, and then we get seconded by Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Olivier.
As I've said in, at other meetings, I appreciate our chief, I appreciate our City Manager, and I appreciate the work that you've done. You know, the search was done, and you found out that the best place for you is where you are now. And I, just as a member of the loyal opposition, will be casting a friendly no vote on this item. I think it's imprudent for the City of Fresno to purchase more property when we should be selling property. So very friendly no vote, appreciate you and the work that you do, and City staff, thank you for the work that you've done on this. We've come to different conclusions, but so I guess if you put a plaque or something, you could, maybe you'll etch my name out or something, but it's a friendly.
Don't include his name.
I appreciate, or the statue, you leave me out, but that's okay, and thank you very much.
What if there's a fire at Councilmember Olivier's house?
Looks like the screen is clear. Councilmember Brenda.
It's very interesting, Clint. I didn't know that you had those thoughts on that. And I, if you're talking about purchasing land for a private enterprise, which the City of Fresno's done before, that's very sketchy to me as well. But when, in my talks with the administration and the mayor, I actually believe that the City of Fresno will come out ahead by purchasing and owning the land rather than leasing land, which was what we've been doing, leasing a building, which just goes on in perpetuity with no, you know, ownership. And so I think that in many ways, no, in many ways, we've been throwing money into the wind, whereas this is an upfront cost, it's a capital outlay of money, but in the long run, which the City of Fresno, we know is going to be here for the long run, will own, will own the land and the building, so.
Well, Councilmember Brenda, just remember that. Today, I will vote to make government smaller today, and you will vote to make government larger today.
Are you renting or are you purchasing your house?
I'm purchasing.
Exactly. Thank you.
But if you must know, I haven't been able to use my kitchen sink in days because the pipe has a hole in it, and the water drained out and made a puddle underneath the house, so we're waiting for that to dry. And so I know that homeownership and property ownership comes with a maintenance cost. And I come from the Bruce Rudd school of sinking funds, and so I just, I think that renting is better. Steve, Councilmember Brenda, do you own your home, or do you rent your home?
Renting.
Oh, you're renting. Right.
But I want to buy.
But you want to buy. I think it makes more economic sense not to.
Renting versus ownership, I mean, renting versus ownership's a great debate, and there's some instances renting probably comes into play. And if we were talking about entering into purchasing land for a private enterprise, which we've done that before.
That's bad.
I'm totally against that.
I agree, that's bad.
But this is a facility that is part of the city, right? And so it's a lot different than investing in a ball field, or this, that, or the other. So I think it really comes into play. And as a renter, I will tell you, like for instance, at the current place that I'm at, you could make the case that I've thrown away four years' worth of rent, okay? So I do understand that, and, but I think that purchasing in this case makes a lot better sense.
Well, I would sell this building that we're in right now if we could and get it off the books, and we could lease something someplace else for a lot cheaper. So that's all I'm saying.
That's, is this related to cannabis issue with you? I've got to ask, that's kind of starting to sound like there's some THC involved.
Council President, this is one of the reasons of many why we're going to miss Clint Olivier come January of next year, so. You have a great spirit, my friend.
That's very kind of you. I'd sell the airport, too.
I withdraw those comments.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Yes, I just want to say I appreciate the efforts from our administration and Fire Chief Donnis. I think this makes the most sense to purchase this building rather than just continuing to pay rent, as has been said forever. Once you purchase this, we will own it. You need it. City of Fresno needs it. The people we represent need it, and it just makes sense to own it at some point. You know, you will, fiscally, it just pencils out to own it rather than just keep paying like we've been doing and to make somebody else wealthy. So this is the right course of action. It's not complicated, and I will certainly support this.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield. I agree with some of the comments made that it is, you know, the best investment that we could make. I believe that it is the fiscal responsible thing to do in this case, in that as we're looking to the future and we understand the development that is happening downtown, I think it's great for the City of Fresno to have control of this property because we know that high-speed rail is being built, and I think that there's a lot of potential opportunity with having control of that site and that area, which will be near to the high-speed rail station.
Thank you. So I'll be supportive of the item. So there is a motion and a second. Any opposition? So the motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Olivier opposed. A friendly no, but he was still opposed. Next, we will move on to item 3A under general administration. This is a bill for introduction replacing section 4104 of the Fresno Municipal Code and rescinding resolution number 2003 relating to debarment, public works.
Good morning. Thank you, Council President and Councilmembers. I'm Scott Mosher with the Public Works Department, and want to just briefly introduce this item related to debarment. That's maybe an unfamiliar term, but essentially deals with banning a contractor, subcontractor, or supplier from being able to bid, propose, or be awarded a contract. It's not something new to the city. We have an existing debarment procedure, but last fall, we began a review at the City Manager's Office request, and Public Works, along with other city departments and City Attorney's Office, looked into our existing procedures, which are contained in your packet back from 2003. What we found is that those were cumbersome, more expensive, and created delays for the community and additional costs for the taxpayers, and also that we were doing something that other large cities in California were not. Our Attorney's Office was extremely helpful and helped us in crafting this proposed ordinance for introduction today. This essentially This essentially mirrors the City of San Diego and the practices they have. What this does, right now, the procedure is in order to debar, ban, a contractor. Step one is that they would have to be low bidder on a project that we would bring forward to the council, and ask the council to declare that bidder non-responsible, not capable of performing the work, and then we would bypass them and go to the second bidder. This, of course, introduces the possibility that bidder then protests the award to number two, creating a delay of months on the project, impacts the community, impacts operations, introduces additional cost, and even impacts the very solid contractor who we'd be getting ready to award the project to. So in essence, if we know we have those problems today, again, this is not something we do lightly, a very serious situation before we'd even consider a debarment. In that situation, this would revise the process, enable the city manager to initiate the procedure. There's still due notice to that bidder or that contractor. They would have opportunity to appeal before the, for short term, before the Capital Projects Construction Oversight Board, that this council is formed with one representative per district. And for serious situations of a permanent debarment, they'd be able to appeal that to the independent hearing officer. And also, before bringing this before the council, we were sure to go out to the industry, because contractors would be the ones most impacted. We sat with the associated general contractors, who reviewed it, brought it before their executive committee that meets monthly, and they had no concerns. They felt this was appropriate and a good process. Again, today is for introduction, and staff's available with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, we'll go out to the public, actually, first. Is there anyone from the public who wants to comment on this item? CNN will bring it back.
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Chavez.
Wait your turn, Councilmember Capriolo. Back in the line. Scott, thank you for meeting with me, and, you know, you answered the questions that I had initially, you know, on this item. But I did flag for you a couple of provisions that I wanted to explore, and I know that today it's only for introduction. There are other large municipalities and organizations that do a bulk of contracting work here in the city and the valley, and I know that they've looked into it, and our neighbors down the street have a provision whereby if a contractor sues the entity, they are prohibited from bidding on additional work. City Attorney, we spoke briefly about this. I wanted to explore that, and, you know, the reasoning behind that is, we've had conversations here publicly about other entities coming up here and threatening to initiate litigation with the City of Fresno over their perception of some kind of a practice. So would we be able to include some language in that? Is that allowed, is the question I'm asking?
Well, the mere fact of filing a lawsuit may not qualify as a reason to debar, but we did craft some language that we believe gets you as close as you could to, if you would like me to read that.
So what would that look like?
Yes. We would add subsection, small h, Arabic four, then Roman numeral small four. It's on page 16 of the draft ordinance. That would say, another reason for debarment would be the bidder or contractor has been found to have submitted claims with materially false information through a contractual legal process, in other words, in court or through an arbitration, something like that, or has been found to have violated the False Claims Act that's under that California Government Code.
Okay, and I want to put that out there for my colleagues, just to consider, because I know Councilmember Baines mentioned that last time when we had the specific contractor come up. And you're right, I mean, this individual had gone tons of work from the City of Fresno and was still here threatening litigation. I'd like for my colleagues to consider exploring that language and see if we can incorporate that into this piece of work that we're working on. So that's really all I had, just wanted to flag that for the administration and my colleagues. Thank you.
Councilmember Baines.
I just want to quickly respond to Councilmember Chavez. Absolutely, I'd be, I think that's a great addition, I think we should have that in there, and when it comes back for final approval, I'd be, if that's not in there and you need to make a motion or however, we'd get that in there, I'd be supportive of that.
Councilmember Capriolo.
I appreciate both my colleagues' comments, but I think we're on very thin ice here and very treacherous area when you start precluding lawsuits, which would actually initiate a lawsuit. By precluding a lawsuit, regardless of the value or lack of value of it, so I'm just cautiously suggesting that this language has to be very, very precise, because if not, it's going to, actually, in my view, encourage lawsuits, as opposed to discouraging. But the language will be critical, and a lot of lawyers out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Baines.
And I want to encourage, thank you, spoken by another legal mind over here. If, Councilmember Capriolo, I think you know what the intent of the council is, and I think your input on whatever final language comes back, if we're to pursue this action would be critical, so I certainly will be looking at your insight and leadership on that one.
And today, this item is just for introduction, so we will be, do we take a vote today, or do we just?
The council may, but is not required to take a vote today. Typically, if there's a vote at introduction and it's approved, then it comes back on consent the following time. But you can't make changes when you come back for final adoption. So if you're wishing to make this change, you would offer that as part of the introduction today.
Did you guys want to make that offering, or?
Well, in that case, I mean, I'll make the motion to include that.
Make the motion to approve the item with that language.
Correct. And also taking into account Councilmember Capriolo's cautious approach to being very narrowly tailored in that. And I know you'll, we have some of the best attorneys in the City of Fresno, so I know you'll get there, Doug. No pressure.
Councilmember Capriolo.
Thank you. The, well, looking at the language here, it says submitted claims with materially false information. So there's three words that in and of themselves could result in a lawsuit. How do you prove materiality? How do you prove it's false? And then what type of information are we discussing? And it's, I appreciate your suggestion, totally, because we're on the Litigation Reduction Committee, and less is better for us, but I just am concerned about those types of words. And then it goes on to violating the False Claims Act, so they'll deny it, we'll say they did. Here we go with a lawsuit, you know, from mediation all the way to court action, so it's very, very interesting language and an interesting concept. So I'm not so sure I'll support that today. I might abstain, and I'd like to research this a little bit more, get more clarity.
And City Attorney, that's the direction we're getting at. I don't think we're finalizing anything. I think we're giving them some parameters. I think he'll come back with the specific language, and if you're comfortable, then, you know, maybe you can support, and if not, then obviously you can abstain or vote no.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
So, I think that what I'll do, I don't think we necessarily need to take a vote since we're going to be coming with something different, so today, we'll take this as introduction. You've kind of heard the direction from the council, and we can have the more robust debate if needed, when it comes back in the next meeting. Okay? The next item is item 3C, which is a resolution of intention to increase the annual assessment of track 3884 of landscaping and lighting, Public Works.
Thank you. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. This is an item that's very similar to the CFDs that we often bring to you. Those are usually public hearings. This is the first step, because it's a resolution of intention. What we are doing with this is considering, or you'd be authorizing us to send ballots to a neighborhood, to consider raising a property tax assessment, which is very similar to a CFD. This happens to be a landscape and lighting district, but it is a property tax assessment. And it falls under the rules of state law, Proposition 218, which dictates how this ballot process goes. This is a little different than the CFDs that we do, because those are often neighborhoods that are brand-new. We're looking for a vote from a developer or a few landowners. This is a little different in that this is an older inhabited neighborhood. There's two, what, 174 homes, I believe? And they approached the city and, at first, complaining about the condition of their landscaping, but ultimately requesting that we raise the rate, or consider raising the rate, ballot the neighborhood, so that their landscaping could be maintained to a higher level. We've had a meeting in the neighborhood and did get support of almost everyone that attended the meeting. I'm going to ask Aaron to come up, but before I do, I did want to mention one thing. In the staff report, there's a statement here that the rate has never been raised since it was formed in 1983, and I think that's incorrect. The rate was raised at one time prior to 1996. And in 1996, Proposition 218 was passed, and that effectively prohibits any government agency from raising a tax without a vote of the property owner. So what you'd be authorizing today is just for staff to send out ballots to all of the property owners to see if there is support, and it is a protest vote, so we need a majority of the homeowners to support the increase. With that, I'm going to ask Aaron to talk a little bit more about what's proposed in the neighborhood and what the rates would be.
Good morning, Council. Aaron Aguirre, Public Works. What we've done in this area here with the help of Council District Two, we've actually done a pilot project, one of their entrance islands there on Western Metaritz. Prior to us getting there, they had redwoods, they had a bunch of shrubs, but just over the years, with the amount of service we were providing, 60-day service with their rates, we just, we saw deterioration in the plant material. Redwoods through the drought have just have gone away, so we've removed a lot of that. So what we did is we went in and we rehabbed the entire median buffer to the tune of about $30,000 is what District Two spent as a pilot. And then at that point, met with the property owners in a meeting, roughly 40 folks or so, and majority of those folks were in support of us moving forward. Moving forward, what we would do is we would rehab the entire landscape, which is about 78,000 square feet, two other entrance islands, and irrigation improvements. So currently, they're paying about $54 a year to maintain their landscape. With the three-year investment, that rate would go up to about $210. After that, year four, it would drop down to $97 a year. And that $97 allows for a cost inflation factor through our E and R, which ranges between 2% and 3%. So, so, any questions you may have regarding the design or any other maintenance efforts? One other item to add, on that maintenance effort, we'll reduce the service level from 60 days down to a 30-day service. So that's an improvement that they'll see as well, so. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? CNN will bring it back. Councilmember Brendo.
All right, yeah, and I'd just like to talk to my colleagues for a second, but first, I'd like to thank Scott, and Andy, and Aaron for helping all along this pathway, and especially, Aaron and Andrew had to come out after hours last, about a week ago, and have a community meeting, so we really appreciate, you know, the extra effort as well. What really happened here is I had a number of constituents or residents come forward and complain about the level of service that they believed that they were receiving from the City of Fresno. And it was some entry areas into a neighborhood, and a long park strip, maybe about half a mile of park strip along West Avenue, that they'd been, we'd received complaints over the years, but they were really getting upset about it. When I went out and met with them, you know, I agreed. My eyeballs would tell me how bad things looked. When we looked into it, we realized that the amount of money that they'd been paying in their annual property tax was barely sufficient to cover raking leaves and spraying weed killer on, right? It wasn't helpful for plant replacement. Of course, the drought had wiped out a number of plants. You get little auto accidents and all types of things that'll take out plants, and so there was not enough money that they were raising themselves to replace all that. So when they felt they were upset at the City of Fresno for not doing our job, what we really discovered was we were doing only what that amount of money would allow. So then we began to talk with them about a partnership going forward and seeing if they wanted to increase that amount on their own property tax. And that's what last week's meeting was about. I wanted to show a commitment on behalf of the City of Fresno, so there's three entry points into the neighborhood and a long park strip along West Avenue. And we, I spent some infrastructure dollars to beautify one of the entry points, to give an example of what could happen if they decided to take this challenge. And so we did that. We planted in January, I believe it was, Aaron. Things already looked good, Aaron. I drove by there the other day. The trees we planted, I don't know, 50-something new trees and shrubs and flowers, it looks great. And then we had our community meeting once that was in to show them this could happen. If you don't want to do anything, at least you got one little upgrade out of it, but, you know, you won't see much improvement on the other stuff. And so that they were, but they were very happy. Like Aaron and Andrew said, we had 40 or 50 people in a backyard, and it was almost unanimous to go forward. By the way, I was very, you guys know where I am on taxes, so I was very neutral, and I made it clear to them. You can either see this as a one little, one-time freebie, or you can choose to take this to the next level. And they chose to take it to the next level. So that's what they're asking for today. That's what we're initiating today, a Prop 218 procedure that will allow a ballot to go out to these 174, five homes, and then they'll all make their neighborhood decision on where they want to go with that. But we're just trying, we're just here to facilitate that for them. But hypothetically, if it all works out, and we see a major beautification of the entry points of this neighborhood, this concept could catch on, you know, in other areas around town. So I'll make the motion to approve this initiation.
So there's a motion, and a second by Councilmember Baines, a motion by Councilmember Brendo. Councilmember Baines.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank my colleague, Councilmember Brendo, I think, and staff, too. This was a pretty, pretty unique, pretty unique approach, and I think in challenging times, when obviously resources are scarce, finding unique ways to bring, allow the public to come on and be, have a better partnership with the community is fantastic. So I want to commend you and staff, and I know the city manager, too. Thank you, thank you guys for coming up with a unique opportunity. I'm curious to see how the vote's going to come out, of course. You know, I'm always a fan of allowing our residents, when they can, to make their own choices, so I think this is a good first step, and if they approve it, I won't be here to see the long results, but I think that the idea is really unique. And I think that's the kind of innovative things that have to be done in some time, so happy to be a second.
Councilmember Chavez.
Councilmember Brendo, I want to echo what Councilmember Baines said. Great job. I think there are a number of CFDs around our city that are on the same boat. I'd love to meet with you and kind of chat on that approach, but great, great innovative idea for you to work with those residents. There, like I said, there are a number of those in my district, and it's always the conversation, why, why aren't we getting more work? And then come to find out, some of those rates haven't been adjusted since 1982, 83. So I'd love to pick your brain a little bit on how you went about doing that process, but great job. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I just have a couple questions, maybe for you, Scott, in terms of how the CFD works. Like, for example, in District One, do we also have those CFDs, or are those more of a newer thing?
That's a great question. Just to clarify, City of Fresno, actually, the council formed a Community Facilities District, known as CFD Two, back around 1997, and that was post Prop 218. So all of those have the escalators on them for cost of living adjustments. Some were formed with low rates, which have lesser services, but at least they have the COLA to take that up. Our real problem is with the Landscape Lighting Maintenance District, which this subdivision in District Two is part of. We have over 140 subdivisions around the entire City of Fresno, all of which have their rates frozen in place. which have their rates frozen in place as of nineteen, you know, the Prop 218 passage by the voters. They're all frozen, and essentially, we have sixty-day service on all of those tracks. So we're excited about this. Again, as the council's comments have been, it enables the people to really choose what they want, but this could be a great pilot, which we could use in other areas if there's community interest in making some improvements. By comparison, the city of Clovis has the same issue. They've systematically balloted the property owners about every five years.
Wow, okay. And what is generally the average for these charges? Because I know that, like, what you guys put in the staff report, it's about two-hundred dollars the first two years, and then it goes down.
That's correct. It'd be about two-hundred dollars for the first three years, and then it would drop back down. Many of our LLMD tracks have rates well under one-hundred dollars a year. Some are under fifty dollars a year for the charges. By comparison, a typical CFD neighborhood is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to, as you saw this morning, we have one from Granville that was over nine-hundred dollars per year because of the level of amenities within those neighborhoods.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Brando, I think, you know, I want to commend your efforts. One question that I had for you in terms of folks wanting to, you know, pay the additional dol, potentially paying the additional dollars, have you guys thought about, because I'm sure there are some folks that are renters in the area, right? How would they be impacted? And I know that you have a neighborhood that is low income, which is Pinedale. And so just have you had any thoughts in terms of the unintended consequences, maybe of higher rents for these folks, or any of that, because maybe it's not, it would be indirectly passed to them? So just your thoughts on that. I'm always concerned about those types of neighborhoods and communities. I know that you represent neighborhoods that could afford the increase for a couple of years, but I'm also cautious when it comes to increasing the dollar amounts that we're charging, because some folks can't afford it.
Yeah, and that, and that's a good question. And but before, and before I answer that, I want to recognize Raj over here, too. I was looking this direction, but Raj was really important in bringing this about. Matter of fact, it could have been his idea. Oliver, you mentioned something that, that our staff came up with, they were really on top of this. So for three years, we're front-loading their tax, their property tax. That provides the capital to do all of the heavy work. And then it drops back down to just a maintenance level. And Raj checked into that, and we had a great couple of meetings figuring out how to get the capital. We don't want to wait ten years to make all these improvements, right, till money builds up. So they're going to do it in a wave, and they're going to take three years and get a big chunk of it done. So I wanted to recognize Raj. But so Esmeralda in Pinedale, for starters, I do a lot of, a lot of work in Pinedale. And we've done some beautifica, last year, we did two beautification projects of my infrastructure dollars just for Pinedale, no strings attached. We also spent our CDBG monies to complete the streets, the complete streets program. So now all of Pinedale has sidewalks where kids can get to school. So we're doing a lot there. On this particular issue, what we're going to look at to see is what is the appetite for some neighborhoods to consider this, right? And so I think that if we get success here, then I think maybe it's something that we'll shop around and see if some other neighborhoods want to be involved in. Now, I, correct me if I'm wrong, the 218 process, I don't think renters get to vote on that. I think it's got to be the property owner. Is that right? Is that right? Yeah. So there'll be some renters there. This particular neighborhood is mostly, I would say, over ninety percent ownership. It's a very nice neighborhood that, you know, has dilapidated with this lack of resources. So I-
It doesn't include Pinedale.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't include Pinedale at all. No, it doesn't include Pinedale at all. But, you know, it's one of those things, and Councilman Chavez, I'll be glad to meet with you, because if this is successful, there'll be maybe even some variations of this. This seemed like a real good fit for this neighborhood. And so their maintenance was just frozen in time in 1996, and fifty-four dollars a year doesn't pay for what it paid for in 1996, right? So, so, but they really liked the improvements. We, we kind of went out there and showed them what could be done, and so.
Well, thank you for that clarification, Councilmember, because I was, I was thinking, I was looking at the map, and I thought it encompassed the entire area of your district, so it's just a particular, particular neighborhood. Okay, great. So then that clarifies it for me. Councilmember Bretafeld.
Yeah, just curious, what does it have to pass by for it to go into effect? Is it fifty plus one?
That's fifty plus one, yes.
Okay, just curious.
Thank you. So there is a motion by Councilmember Brando, and a second by Councilmember Baines. Any opposition? CNN, the motion carries unanimously.
So we're right at the lunch hour. We've pretty much done most of the agenda. The only things that are left, so what I will, just let my colleagues know, we're going to recess until, we'll come back at 1:45, where we'll do the committee reports, and then we have a two o'clock special per-
Moved.
Moved, right? Yeah, it was postponed. Yeah, so we're going to come back at 1:45, do the committee reports, then we have a special presentation for our youth commissioners, who will be here at two. And then we will go to our closed session. We do have outside council coming about, is it 2:15? So as soon as we wrap up the youth commission, we will go straight to closed session. So make sure you're all here by 1:45. Resume, thank you, everyone, for those that were on time, because I wasn't. I will confess, but thank you. So we'll go ahead and resume. We have left item 4A, which are updates on council boards and commission communication. So if any of the council members have any reports, please punch up, and I will call you, call on you. No? No updates? No updates? Okay. So no updates on that. We'll go out to unscheduled communication. We have, anyone who is here that wishes to make comments at this point for unscheduled communication? The last item we have is right now at two o'clock before we go to closed session. I know that the youth commissioners are getting organized and going to be coming in in the next three minutes. So how many do, are they all here? Most of them are?
Two or three.
Okay. So we have a few minutes. We have some here in the front.
Follow your leadership style.
So we have three minutes for the next item. We're going to go ahead and get started. Do we have everyone here now?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So what I will do, I will come down there, because we want to do a special presentation this afternoon, recognizing our, obviously, entire Fresno youth commission, but I think that it's important today to recognize a number of the commissioners that, one, have completed their second year, and then also to celebrate them, because many of them are graduating and some of them are moving away. Some are staying local, but some are going away to college. And so we want to recognize each, each of their accomplishments and just thank them for the work that they've been doing over the last two years. So I will go down here, and then each council member, as your representatives are called up, you guys can go. I know that you guys have a special recognition for your commissioners. You guys should come down and, and be with them to take a picture and say a few words. But again, great afternoon to recognize our youth commissioners. Just want to give you a little bit of history in terms of how the Fresno Youth Commission came to be, and then what they've been doing over the last two years. But as many of you guys know, I think most of you guys were on the council, except for Councilmember Chavez and Bretafeld, when the youth commission was created two years ago, and where we appropriated funding to be able to make the commission, the commission work and be able to partner up with the Youth Leadership Institute. So just very important body for the city of Fresno, because the young people over the last two years have been able to give great feedback, policy recommendations, and to see some projects through. And so very excited to have been a part of this, and just proud today to be able to recognize all of the commissioners, but in particular, those that are moving on to the next chapter in your educational journey. And so I will call up my District One youth commissioner, Chance, if you want to come on up. And, yeah, let's clap for him. So Chance has been with us since the inception of the youth commission. We're very proud of the work that he's done over the last two years. Again, worked tirelessly, not only for the commission, to advance the issues that were important to the young people, but very proud that he's graduating this year. So when is your graduation?
My graduation is, I think, on June third.
June third? You don't know? Are you sure? You're not sure? But, so he's a few weeks away from graduating. What is exciting, I want to let everyone know, he's actually, have been accepted and will be attending UC Davis, which is one of my alma maters, so go Aggies. So very proud of, of the fact that you are going to continue your educational journey at UC Davis. And so I wanted to thank you on behalf of not only my office, but the city of Fresno, and present you with a certificate of recognition. So on behalf of the city of Fresno, it is our honor to congratulate you on your two years serving as a member of the city of Fresno Youth Commission, representing District One. During your time, you were able to identify problems that the youth face, develop solutions, and relay your research to city elected officials here in the city of Fresno. Thank you for representing your peers, and we wish you the best of luck on your future endeavors as you go on and continue your education at UC Davis. So let's give it up for Chance and recognize him for the great work that he did. Shy. He's being shy. So next, I see that the mayor is here, so I'll call up the mayor if you want to go ahead and present the certificates of recognition to your-
Thank you. And would Marco and Antonio come up? That's right, give him a hand. I met these guys, actually, on the campaign trail in 2016. The Boys in Men in Color had probably the best organized questions of anyone I, the several I went to during the election in 2016. I've worked with them since on a lot of projects, including, or the, in your facts, recommendations have been reviewed, by the way. And I want to thank you guys for all the time you put into it. I want to thank our council for supporting this youth commission. So I'll start with Marco. Congratulations. Antonio, congratulations. Do you guys want to say anything? Come on, you're a future mayor here, right?
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. I want to just really thank, you know, the commissioners for their, their hard work, for their ideas, and for their continued commitment to becoming the, the next leaders, you know, the, the future, but also the present of the city. And, you know, we look forward to really with this cohort, start kind of, you know, filling in some of these seats behind us, you know, including yours, Mr. Mayor, so.
Not too soon. Marco? Thanks, everybody.
Good job, gentlemen. Next, we have District Two. So Councilmember Brando will be presenting to his youth commissioner, and it is Nina Narahari.
Right, come on up, Nina. Thank you, Council President. Right on. Nina, you are also one of the commissioners that's been a part since the very inception, right? So you were here on day one, so you've stuck it out, and you did a great job, and you even served in a couple of capacities on the commission. Is that right?
Yeah, I was the chairman.
You were the chair?
Yeah.
Oh, for, for one of the years? You know, I knew that. And what did Chandler do? Chandler did something to-
She was the secretary.
Okay, so both of my commissioners, and Chandler couldn't be here today, but also served the commission as well. So you were the chair for a year, huh? Good deal. And I think we're going to have you and Chandler back in a couple of weeks to address an issue here at council as well. So you're very involved, and now you're graduating, and you're going to where?
Uh, UC Berkeley.
UC Berkeley.
Woo! Go Bears! Go Bears!
Yes, you're going to have a Bears jersey and sweatshirt and beanie and all that fun stuff, right? So we just want to say thank you, and you and I had met a couple of times throughout the, the course of the commission time, probably not as much as you wanted to. You made that clear to me, but we've met a couple of times, and you, you were very involved, and we do appreciate that. So we wanted to-
So you were the chair for a year, huh? Good deal. And I think we're going to have you and Chandler back in a couple of weeks to address an issue here at council as well. So you're very involved, and now you're graduating, and you're going to where?
Uh, UC Berkeley.
UC Berkeley.
Woo! Go Bears! Go Bears!
Yes! You're going to have a Bears jersey and sweatshirt and beanie and all that fun stuff, right? So we just want to say thank you. And you and I had met a couple of times throughout the course of the commission time, probably not as much as you wanted to. You made that clear to me. But we've met a couple of times, and you were very involved, and we do appreciate that. So we wanted to recognize you today for your hard work and the time you spent on the commission, and thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Nina, for your, for your time. And again, we're going to have you back to talk in a couple of weeks on another issue, okay?
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Nina.
Next, I'm going to give Councilmember Baines an opportunity to just say a few remarks on his Youth Commissioners that unfortunately couldn't be here.
No, thanks, Council President. And I'll be quick. I just wanted to recognize Jalen and Javon, Jalen White, Javon Mendez, who are fantastic commissioners. I've had the opportunity to meet with them on multiple occasions. They are both dynamic. Jalen's going to be attending Arizona State University in the fall, and Javon's going to be staying right here at Fresno State and be a Bulldog. Go Bulldogs! And we really, really wish them both the best. And once again, they, you know, Council President Soria, they do a great job. So thank you for all the leadership that you guys provide for them.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. Alyssa, come on down. How you doing? Good, good to see you. So Alyssa is District Four's Youth Commissioner. This is her first year. She has another year to go, right? You looking forward to it? Really? Come on now. Be honest, you are, aren't you? Perfect. All right, well, anyway, she attends Fresno City College, my alma mater, and hopefully she'll go to Fresno State, my alma mater as well, and be a Bulldog. And then from there, with a political science major, what do you think you'll do next?
Um, well, I actually switched my major to business. So I'm looking forward to going to, going to Fresno State and being a part of the business program they have there.
That's a great choice, because I was a political science major. Look at me. Not a mess.
Well, maybe she could take your seat after.
I think so. In fact, well, I don't think she can qualify right now, but I could, I could make that happen. Anyway, it's a great pleasure for us to give you this certificate of recognition, and look forward to you serving us for another year and continued success in education and your participation in the issues that face the city of Fresno. Your whole group does so much for us. We can't thank you all enough, and it's my pleasure again to present this to you. Mama, you would come up and do a photo with us? Without you, there's no her, right? Take a photo with her? Laura, take a photo.
Thank you. Now it's Councilmember Lewis Travis.
Adriana, come on down. So a little quick story. Yes, Claudia. Quick story. So our commissioners actually had an opportunity to do something really cool. They actually went, and, you know, we did it through our city budget, and they actually solicited, and I think you guys did some site visits, too, to a couple of organizations. Then they ended up picking an organization that they would like the city to fund. And so I wanted to give them that opportunity to kind of get a feel for what it's like to be in the hot seat. So you guys made some folks happy and probably some not so happy. Mission accomplished. But I just want to say thank you. Thank you for serving for District Five. You guys have done a great job. You've had great mentorship over here, and I just wanted to thank you for the work that you've done. And if you'd like to say a few words, you're- Now, you're majoring in accounting, right? And you're at Fresno Pacific? All right. You haven't changed your major? Okay.
I'd like to thank you just for the opportunity. I thought that was a really amazing project that we got to do, to select, to be able to give money to people, to help people in District Five. I really appreciated that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for serving. And here is a token of our appreciation. Thank you so much. There will be a follow-up Starbucks card, because you can't buy Starbucks coffee with us. But we just want to say thank you for that. I'm serious about that. You're going to get your Starbucks card. Thank you, guys.
Sit, Lolly. Okay. No problem. We will catch that another, well, do you want me to give this to you to give to her? Why don't you do that? Okay. Next up.
And your commissioner is graduating this year, too, and she's going to be a Bulldog.
Excellent. Excellent.
Let's be proud of her. Next is Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you. Miranda, come on up. I had a note, yeah, applause is good. I had a note on my desk that said you were not going to be here, so I'm really glad that you were. Now, I think of all the commissioners, oh, we lost one, right? What was the name of the young-
Gabriel.
Gabriel, right? He went to-
He, uh, he goes to Esseña.
He, okay, so he goes to Esseña. But why did he leave again? He went to go to a different project or something? Some kind of project? He went onward and onward, and he did a, he did a good job. Miranda and Gabriel, probably the two who were subjected to the most psychological torture, who were in my office twice, getting lectured about life, liberty, and property. Getting book recommendations, right? Read Atlas Shrugged, those kinds of things. And so for that, you have definitely earned this plaque. You've probably earned a lot more, but I do appreciate your service. Thank you. You're doing good work. You did good work. Thank you so much for being a part of the program. If you would, for a second, will you tell us a little bit about your future plans and maybe how you are going to, or how you have applied what you've learned on the commission to, to your future plans?
Yeah, so I will be starting college next year, and hopefully as a political science major, and- Sorry to disappoint. A lot of what I've learned in the Youth Commission, I hope to apply as an actual council member in the future, and hopefully to-
Oh, good.
And I hope to make a lot of improvement in my community, more specifically in the Latino community as well. Yeah.
Where are you going to college?
Going to UC Riverside. Yeah.
Ooh, good.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Again, congratulations to all the Youth Commissioners. Councilmember Olivier, if you can stay down there, what we want to do is just get everyone here for a picture, the entire council, and then the commissioners that are here.
Uh, you gave me 1984.
Ah, did you read it? Is all that stuff happening now, or what? Hey, don't worry, we hear it all the time. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't just recommend books. I gave, I gave my-
So we're on our last item for today. We're going to closed session.
Yes, in closed session, we have existing litigation, California Groceries Association versus City, and then also performance evaluation and labor negotiation concerning city attorney. I would not expect any announcements afterwards.
Perfect. Thank you. So we will be adjourning and not coming back.